Can I please have roll call?
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Nicholas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Diego.
Here.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
And Councilmember Nagalas.
Here. And this is a good time for the just cause provision, Rosa?
Yes, please.
Okay. I have just cause to attend this meeting remotely under AB 2449 due to personal illness that prevents me from attending in person. In this room, no one over the age of 18 is with me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And given Councilmember Nagalas' participation online, we have opened the public comment portal for members of the public to join as well.
Sounds very good. Thank you, Councilmember Nagalas. Hope you feel better. Next item, please.
Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight, I have a kind of a special kind of connection. In celebration of National First Responders Day, which was yesterday, celebrated yesterday, I've asked our fire chief, Matt Sampson, to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you are able to, please stand, place your right hand over your heart, and we'll follow our chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Next item, please.
Moving on to Agenda Review.
We have no changes to the agenda.
Madam City Manager, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to see if we could move the legislative update up. Item number seven to be the first administrative item tonight as a courtesy to our guest.
We would just like to confirm that it's a remote participation, as long as we have Nicolau De Luca. As long as he's able to do that, we're happy to do that.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Nicolau is not online yet, so if I don't know, someone can let him know.
We'll do presentations as well, yeah. Next item, please.
Does the council have any Levine Act disclosures tonight?
None.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements from staff.
Since we are having announcements from staff, I have two quick announcements. The first is that the Library Parks and Recreation Building, I think you probably noticed as you drove in, but it is a vote center for 2025. And it's been open since October 25th and will be open until November 4th. It's open in person all days, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., from Saturday through Election Day. Election day hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And there's also a drop-off box out in the parking lot. And just the second quick announcement is tomorrow, the city is hosting a workshop called Refresh El Camino Real in South San Francisco. This is open to the public. It's going to be here at the Library Park and Recreation Building, October 30th, at 6:30 p.m. in the social hall. We will have light meal, childcare, and a Spanish translation. If folks are unable to join, we would encourage them to take our survey. This is in the future. This isn't something happening immediately, but it's the long-range planning for the El Camino Real. So we would love to get lots of public participation.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Next item, please.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations. Item number one is a proclamation celebrating Diwali, October 18 through the 22nd of 2025.
Thank you, thank you. Tonight, it's really kind of a historic setting for us here in South San Francisco, and at the same time, a very joyful occasion. The city of South San Francisco, we're officially moving forward with the first-ever, believe it or not, proclamation recognizing Diwali. The Festival of Light, celebrated this year from October 18 through October 22. As many of you might have heard or know, Diwali became an official state holiday in California recently when Governor Gavin Newsom signed Assembly Bill 268 into law this month. And so it will be effective officially starting January 1st, 2026. But this is a special celebratory moment for our city. It's monumental as well for our state. And being that it is now getting signed into law already, recognizing Diwali as a state holiday. I like to say and recognize the heritage and the value that this brings to our community. More than just a symbolic gesture, it's a powerful affirmation of really two things: the rich cultural aspect, as well as the spiritual traditions that shape our communities here in South San Francisco. California, like I said, is now the first state in the nation to take the steps. And proud also that South San Francisco, we're moving along and being one of the first cities to follow suit. For those of you that might not be aware, Diwali, again, a celebration of light triumphing over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance. It is a time when families gather, homes are illuminated, prayers are offered, and communities really come together in joy and in reflection. It reminds us that even in the most challenging times, such as the ones we're living in, light, remember this, light will always find a way to shine through. Here in South San Francisco, we're very blessed with a community that reflects the diversity and strength of the world. Diwali is not just a festival, it's really a reflection of the values that we hold very near here in our city: unity, compassion, renewal, and hope. Tonight, also, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and be able to award this or to receive the proclamation who's someone who leads with example and embodies these values in our community: Mr. B.J. Patel. B.J. is a respected business owner and hotelier here in our community, and he serves with distinction on the South San Francisco Conference Center Authority Board, helping to guide our city's economic and cultural development. But beyond his professional achievements, B.J. is also a dedicated community leader. He serves also on the Board of BAPS, San Francisco Bay Area, a spiritual humanitarian organization that has long been a beacon of service, of education, and cultural preservation. In fact, earlier this year, we were out in a kind of Marina of San Francisco, celebrating an athletic event that they put on every year for a fundraiser as well. This organization, BAPS, plays really a vital role in promoting the values that we're celebrating tonight with Diwali: selfless service, inner peace, and the pursuit of harmony, not just during the festival in these days, but all year round. So we are honored to welcome the members of the BAPS, BAPS community, here with us tonight. And B.J., thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your generosity. Thank you for your commitment also to both your faith and also the city of South San Francisco. You really help light the way for others, for many of us. And tonight, we are very privileged that you are here along with members of the congregation and organization. So it's my great pleasure to invite Mr. B.J. Patel to the podium to receive this first proclamation celebrating Diwali in the city of South San Francisco. Please help me welcome him to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmember, thank you all so very much for recognizing Festival of Light, Diwali. Diwali, like Mr. Flores explained it quite well than I could ever say. So thank you very much for saying that wonderful words. But just wanted to say, yes, BAPS is an organization right here in our San Francisco, but it's right at the edge of South City and San Francisco. The temple has been here since 2004, and BAPS is here in India since 2000... Sorry, in America since 1977. And BAPS charities is always the first one to help out whenever there is need happen, either in America or worldwide. So thank you very much for recognizing it. Again, Diwali is, like you say, is a wonderful light that shines in everybody's heart and their families. Like you said, family comes together on Diwali. Diwali is our New Year's Eve, and next day is our Hindu New Year's Happen. So Happy Diwali to each and everyone here, and thank you again so much. And I want to recognize all the community member who has arrived with us.
If you could please stand up, I'd love to... Recognize you. Please stand up and join. Yes, thank you for joining us.
And again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman wanted to share a few words to B.J.
Very briefly, so this past weekend, I had the honor of being invited by our friends at BAPS to attend their Diwali celebration in their San Francisco temple. And I just want to say what a beautiful celebration that was. I was not expecting a whole tour, but I enjoyed it. I enjoyed the food. And something that BAPS does is they have these big installations of information teaching you about the culture and the history of the different parts of India, as well as what Diwali is all about. And so I just want to say thank you so much for that. And I hope that all of my council colleagues can attend the BAPS Diwali ceremony next year.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again for joining us, and Happy Diwali. Next item, please.
Moving on to item number two is a proclamation recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Coleman to make this presentation.
Thank you. So it is an honor to present this proclamation recognizing November as National Native American Heritage Month. Here in South San Francisco, we mark Native American Heritage Month by honoring the Ramatosh Aloni, the original peoples of this peninsula. We acknowledge that our city stands on their ancestral and unceded homeland shaped by the slopes of the San Bruno Mountain, the Koma Greek watershed, and the shores of the bay. This month is not only about remembrance, it is also about responsibility. We recognize the resilience of the Ramatosh Aloni peoples in the face of colonization, displacement, and attempted erasure, and we commit to moving from words to action, learning and teaching accurate local history, and uplifting indigenous voices in our programs and our public spaces. And so the theme, actually, for this year's Native American Heritage Month is storytelling. Focusing on what stories need to be told, we encourage our community to celebrate the rich history, the generosity, the extensive contributions, both historical and current, of our indigenous peoples everywhere. And we recognize their stories as inextricably woven into the history of this county and city. And it's my honor to present this to Ms. Sylvia Payne.
Let's welcome Sylvia Payne.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Councilmembers. I do have pamphlets for you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And to folks in the audience, Ms. Sylvia Payne is a future elected official... Oh, sorry, not future, past, maybe, who knows? Past elected official, has served as our city clerk here in South San Francisco.
I apologize for being late getting here. I swear, in 33 years working for the city, I was never late. Thank you for the proclamation. It's really appreciated that you're celebrating this month. And you get these pamphlets, you'll see how many towns and cities in San Mateo County are participating by presenting us with proclamations to put on exhibit at the Sanchez Adobe Interpretative Center. So it's a lot of fun. Going to all these council meetings, I try to get in as many as I can. So if you can attend the month of November at the Interpretative Center, it would be, you know, if you can, we appreciate it. And this last paragraph in this pamphlet reads, "The Sanchez Adobe Historic Site and Interpretative Center are on the ancestral homeland of the Ramalush Aloni. The Aloni are very much a part of San Mateo County's community today. We honor their ancestors, elders, and ongoing presence." I won't take any more of your...
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Celebration.
You won't see me until next year.
Thank you. You're always welcome here. Thank you very much. Next agenda item, please.
Moving on to item number three is a proclamation celebrating 10 years of Future Lab.
About a week and a half ago, members of this council and myself, really, and a few other elected officials, community partners, educators, teachers, students from the South San Francisco Unified School District, Superintendent Moore, and board members, we had the great privilege of recognizing something memorable here in South San Francisco. And that's a decade-long commitment that has helped shape the educational and really the economic landscape of South City. On behalf of our city council and the residents of South San Francisco, I want to present a special proclamation tonight in recognition to Genentech and South San Francisco Unified School District in honor of their 10th anniversary of Future Lab. For those of you that aren't aware, it's a program that has really become a national model for corporate-community partnership, really focusing on STEM education. Future Lab is more than a philanthropic initiative. It's a strategic investment on really the future of our city and innovation. Over the past 10 years, Genentech has worked to ensure that students growing up in the shadow of one of the world's leading biotech campuses have a pathway, have an open door to the life sciences and biotech industry, not just as observers, right, or taking a tour as students, but as participants. And now many of them are actually employees of Genentech. So it involves several programs: Gene Academy, the Helix Cup, Science Garage. Future Lab has provided thousands of local students here in South City with hands-on, sustained exposure to science and to innovation, letting know our future leaders, our innovators, our future Nobel Prize winners, that they do have a seat in the lab, that they can indeed take part of this, and that building their confidence, their skills, and a sense of belonging. And this is important, and this is why we're recognizing. Because this is a partnership that South San Francisco isn't just the birthplace of biotech. We're proud to be able to foster and continue to building bridges amongst our young students. Genentech has shown what it looks like when a company takes responsibility seriously to its community. And Future Lab has helped close the opportunity gaps, particularly for students from communities historically underserved and underrepresented in science and in technology. It has helped young people see themselves, like I said, not just in the classroom, but in the labs, in research teams, and in the leadership of the companies that define our region. So as our city, we're committed to continuing to support this kind of work because it aligns with the values, the strengths of our workforce, and it really builds a more resilient and connected community. So tonight, I want to recognize Genentech, not just for 10 years of Future Lab, but for 10 years of vision, 10 years of partnership, and 10 years of impact to our community. And it's a pleasure to invite up and please help me welcome Suzanne Lee, Director of Employee and Community Engagement with Genentech, and Jason Brockmeyer, Director of Innovation and Community Outreach, representing the South San Francisco Unified School District. Let's welcome him and give him my hand here.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers, thank you so much for this recognition. It truly is Genentech's privilege and honor to recognize and celebrate the impact that we've been able to have through this program that we really co-created and built in close partnership with South San Francisco Unified School District. Jason, in particular, has been our absolute close partner in really understanding how best to take the resources that we have: financial, volunteer hours, everything that we have at our disposal to really make the most impact for students in South San Francisco. And we are so proud to partner, and we hope that other corporations and school districts will look at Future Lab as a blueprint for a public-private partnership in the future.
Thank you.
Just quickly, over 20 years in education, I've never seen a company so dedicated to making sure that the students in their backyard are getting access to high-quality STEM education. And after a decade of seeing these students travel through our STEM pipeline, it's just amazing to see the benefits that they're getting. And now seeing that students are getting access and employed to Genentech. So just again, so impressive to see what the dedication they are to serving their own community. So thank you, Genentech, and thank you all for the recognition.
Thank you both. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, please.
Item number four is a presentation from Alicia Tialavea with Samwon Solutions, a local nonprofit.
Thank you. We wanted to, in light of culture, diversity, being able to celebrate what this looks like, want to invite Alicia to up to the podium to take us into this presentation as well. Welcome.
Greetings, Councilmembers. We're so honored to be here this evening. Alicia Tialavea is actually one of our youth interns for the summer. One of her projects was to help with increasing the relationships between Samwon Solutions and city officials. And so this was one of the projects that she set up. She is not here with us this evening because she's over at El Camino, working on student projects, getting ready for their upcoming football game. She's part of the team prep group that serves the athletes there. But my name is Epi Leone Omavai, and I'm one of the founders and the current Executive Board President of Samwon Solutions. And so we really just wanted to come here this evening to reintroduce ourselves to the council. We started here, actually, in a garage up in Westboro 17 years ago as a bunch of residents. Most of us were from here, from South San Francisco, who really just wanted to get together and make change in our community. We saw a lot of different areas where we needed support and we needed resources, and so we wanted to take action. And so 17 years later, here we are. Our organization is called Samwon Solutions. And while we're open to all of the San Francisco Bay Area counties, we have been here serving, our home base has been predominantly here in San Mateo County, mostly in the city of South San Francisco and San Bruno. And then within the last three years, we've been over in the city of Burlingame because we were fortunate to have had a space. Our mission really is to enhance the quality of life of Samwon and Pacifica people here in the San Francisco Bay Area. We aim to do so by building strong relationships, promoting awareness, and maintaining Fa Samoa, which is known as the Samwon Way, all in hopes of preparing our Samwon community for success. We are made up of 100% volunteer members, and some of them are here today. I'd like to ask them to stand in recognition.
Please, please stand in recognition.
We're joined by our members, some of our community partners, our health ambassadors, and many of them who are residents here. And so I want to thank them for coming. A lot of the work that we do is responsive to the needs of our Pacific Islander community. Some of the areas and ways that we serve is through youth and transitional age, youth empowerment. A lot of our programming is partnered with San Francisco Unified School District in the summertime through the YEE program, which is a program that is mainly facilitated by San Mateo County Office of Education. And we are one of the partners that we actually lead the middle school component of the YEE program over in San Bruno. And we help with program retention and outreach for all of the South San Francisco participants as well. We offer Pacifica Basop, which is a youth entrepreneurship program. We offer support for our upcoming youth who want to pursue careers as artists and creatives, as well as pursue their academic paths through the Leu Manai Education Gift. As I mentioned, we're partners with the YEE Summer Program offered by the county. And we also have an identity and connection program that is super unique because it's the only one of its kind. It's called the Tayala Youth Exchange Program. And this is a program that takes youth from here in the San Francisco Bay Area back home to Samoa for a two-week educational, cultural, arts, and environmental learning experience. And then we also have civic engagement programs that help encourage our community members to get engaged and get involved in the greater community. We have arts and cultural programs where we're teaching and making sure that our people who are living here in the diaspora have access to knowledge and services and spaces just for them to gather and learn and be able to cultivate their understanding of our art and our culture. And we do that in many of these different various ways that are listed here on screen. And then we also have health and wellness components, which we serve and try to help support as much as possible. We're currently the community co-chair for the San Mateo County Pacific Islander Initiative through Behavioral Health and Recovery Services in the Office of Diversity and Equity. This is a position that we've been in for the last two years. And really, we exist to help ensure that we're breaking down the stigma that exists in the Pacific Islander community when it comes to mental health, as well as helping to build the workforce of people who look like us and build representation of AA&amp;HPI folks in behavioral health employability pathways. We have numerous amounts of ways that we empower the community through efforts. We host Know Your Rights workshops, digital literacy workshops. We have a Neshan Night Market that we've hosted for the last three summers now that supports local Pacific Islander businesses who are really just trying to get connected with other folks in the community to help support and to help get the word out. We have sewing classes, weaving classes, that all happen. And, sorry. And one of the strategies in which we've served the community for the last three years has been by operating space, which we've called the Malta, which is our community space in Burlingame. It's been our home and a way that we've been able to outreach to thousands of our community members. We have utilized that space to the maximum capacity. And at the time of this presentation, we were still running and had our doors open, but as of the 20th of this month, we had to close. And so it was a really tough decision that our board members had to come to. But we're super hopeful that there is something different on the horizon because as we've opened, as we've had our doors open, the space has been so impactful in being able to serve our community in a space that feels safe, that's operated for them, that's operated by them, and that really just allows them to grow in community. So that has been one of the best ways that we've been able to exist in community and cultivate community and help one another be able to have a space to support each other. We don't do this work alone. These are some of the partners that we've had throughout the years, many of which that we've built really strong relationships with. Like I mentioned, we're volunteered, so most of us, we have a nine-to-five. I'm an educator over in San Bruno Park School District. And our other founders, they also work in education, they work in policy, they work in mental health positions. And so we cannot do this work alone, so we try and lean heavily on the partnership and the network of professionals and folks that really just share our heart for community. And specifically for the city of South San Francisco, these are some of the ways throughout the years that we've been involved directly outside of youth programming and community empowerment outreach services. In 2008, like I mentioned, we started here. In 2011, we were part of the Planning Committee and part of South San Francisco's Coalition for Safe Neighborhoods that organized the Peace Walk from South San Francisco, in direct result to a community tragedy that happened in 2010 to 2012. In collaboration with South San Francisco Unified School District, we launched the Pacific Parents Group. In 2010 to 2019, we offered arts and cultural workshops and performing our performances right here at El Camino High School. And 2022, all the way up until now, we offer college and career readiness, youth summer career academy in partnership, again, for our high school students, middle school students, and transitional age students. So these are some of the ways that we've been involved. So these are some of the ways that we've been involved here. We have a long history with the city of South San Francisco. Personally, myself, I'm second generation born, or I'm first generation born here. My grandparents came and moved here in the 80s. They purchased their first home up on Hillside, which then they turned around and transferred over to another community member, another family member in the Samoan community who was coming up. And then they purchased the home over in Avalon, where both of my grandparents lived and cultivated community until they died. And so I'm going to just ask really quickly, I know we're short for time, for two of our community, one of our board members, and then one of our youth facilitators and participants to come up and just share a couple of words really quickly.
Talafalava and warm greetings, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members, excuse me. My name is Lulani Julie Taffey-Llello-Mores. I've been a resident in South San Francisco since I was three years old. So I believe this year hits my 20-year mark. I actually attended Berryberry in Altoloma. I've been very active and present in this community. I have been a member of Samoan Solutions since I was in elementary school, hosting workshops that Samoan Solutions programmed out of Los Ritos all the way into Burlingame on Mahler Road at La Malta. I have been a part of and active in so many programs. But today, I want to talk to you all about Tayala, since that happened this year, the Youth Exchange Program that operates out of Samoan Solutions. I hold many identity markers, but I think first and foremost, I honor being Samoan. Although I am first generation, my mother is an immigrant from American Samoa, I hold my diasporic identity very seriously. As a student of life, I want to learn more about the world, and I think that can be done through learning about my heritage. And Samoan Solutions, since I was a child, has been a vessel for myself and my family to do so. And Tayala is actually one of the programs I participated in this year. In April, I had the opportunity to head back to Samoa, where my grandmother and my great-grandparents are born and raised. And it was my first time visiting there, and it has transformed my entire understanding of Fasamo, the way, the Samoan way of life. I just want to thank you all here today for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you.
Talafan, good evening, everyone. My name is Talavoa Mavai. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members. I have the honor of serving on the AAPI Alliance of San Mateo County's Board as a co-chair of our membership committee. And I also am part of a, I'm a delegate of the California Democratic Party. I also serve on the AAPI Caucus Board of the California Democratic Party. And then lastly, in my role within the party, I serve as a vice chair on the Justice Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Committee, which is a standing committee within the party. But this evening, I'm here in my capacity as a current board member at Samoan Solutions. I am, as the blurb says up there, my lifetime member, turned, or turned to coordinator, and then I eventually became a board member. And touching back on the Peace Walk that Epi had referenced, I was actually one of the main organizers in that. I was a student at South San Francisco High School, and that brought me great pride and ignited a passion to continue serving and giving back to my community. But I hope this conversation this evening and this reintroduction can spark a collaborative relationship that can allow us to reestablish our roots here within South City and, in the end, find a space that we can serve our community better. But thank you so much again for having us this evening.
Thank you.
We appreciate the time.
Thank you.
So that's pretty much our presentation in short. We really want to just reestablish, you know, a relationship with the current city council, with the current mayor, to find out ways that we can work together. We're not the only, we understand that we're not the only ones who are impacted by the changes currently that, and the challenges of funding. And so we want to really just lean into what we know is most valuable, which is our relationships and building and strengthening those partnerships with folks who are like-minded, who are ready to serve, ready to work. And while we've been around for the last 17 years, I feel like the majority of our effort has really been to serve and to support the community. So we haven't actually ever come to the city council and met anyone like this before. So perhaps we should have done this a long time ago. And before I just jump off, I do want to just say that one of our most precious and amazing partners that have been rocking with us and allowed us to really just grow as an organization has been Asian American Recovery Services, who's just located right there on Mission Road. And I do want to just mention our beautiful heart queen, the late Nani Wilson, who really, she just really made a way for so many of us to be able to be the light in all of the spaces, even in the hard times, even in the dark times. I definitely recognize council member from sister to sister. And I know that you know that that's part of the work and the hard work and legacy that Auntie Nani leaves. And so Samoan Solutions really wouldn't have, wouldn't be who we are without our Asian American Recovery Services partnership and without Auntie Nani's love and legacy. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Epi, for your presentation. To the board members, to the community members. Thank you. Thank you for existing. Just know that you have a home. You have a space here in South San Francisco. We see you. We hear you. You are part of our community, your ancestors, your parents, your grandparents. We value this partnership, and here's to a long-lasting partnership. Again, thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking those words and for holding this space. It's very important. And here's to turning the page and supporting you in whichever way that this, the city of this council can in numerous ways. Thank you for walking the walk. I know that was very important for our city during those tumultuous times during 2010, 2012. So thank you again for being here tonight. Thank you.
If I may.
Sure.
If our city staff could grab their contacts for Samoan Solutions, because I believe they may be looking for new space. And if we are able to somehow shepherd that, maybe connect them to some of the property owners in our city, maybe to our Chamber of Commerce, and see if we can find them a space so that they can continue their operations and the work that they do in the community here in South City.
Or even sharing sponsored groups with Parks and Rec. Perhaps that could be an opportunity. Great. Thank you again. Have a great night. Thank you for coming. We're moving on to next agenda item, please.
Moving on to public comments. And at this time, we will begin with members of the public. We'll start with Bart Bantoh.
Thank you. Evening. Mayor Flores.
Is the mic on?
Is it on? I can just speak really loud.
Just those that are hearing at home.
How about now?
Closer, maybe.
Closer. Oh, is that what it is?
Maybe the volumes are down. I'm not sure.
How about now? How's that sound? Is that better?
That's probably, thank you.
You really got to lean into this one.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor, Council Members. I am Bart Bantoh, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Building Trades Council. We are 10,000 men and women working in the construction industry in San Mateo County, several who reside in the, several who reside in the industrial city of South San Francisco. I want to acknowledge the leadership of the city council and thank you for your desire to utilize a PLA. It is the leadership of elected representatives like yourselves that invoke economic growth. You maximize tax dollars by putting those dollars to work for the people while executing your fiduciary responsibility. A PLA is a great tool to get the job done and check those boxes. PLAs are being utilized for public work in many cities, school districts, and infrastructure projects in the Bay Area, Northern California, Southern California, and across the country. So much so that there are many studies and reports on the outcomes of PLA projects versus projects being built without them. When it comes to the question of a value add regarding PLAs, the verdict is in. They work, and they work well. As you will hear from my colleague, there are many proven benefits gained from the use of a PLA. But here are a few points I want to highlight. For the worker, it is, for the worker, there's the benefit of safety. Due to the training infrastructure alone, there's a 31% lower injury rate on projects built under PLAs. When it comes to wage and hour violation protections, for example, South San Francisco passed a policy on regarding any, on labor commission violations holding up occupancy permits. A PLA will have a real-time compliance that will settle any such violation in a matter of weeks through the PLA. And this is available to all workers, on the project, union or not. And there's no need or cost from the city or wait time from the state. Benefit for the contractor, the use of a project labor agreement, excuse me, the use of a joint labor management programs. These are the best and highest standardized programs in the construction industry. And they have an access, they have access to a network of highly skilled workers who graduated from these programs. And for the city, there's project stability and productivity. A recent study I received actually yesterday reports that an analysis of 313 public projects in Sacramento County found that PLAs are associated with, are associated with a 17% faster completion rate. I mean, 17% is a great margin of effectiveness. And there's a cost savings. I want to repeat that. Savings. Studies have shown an average cost reduction of 4% on primarily union-built projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a win-win-win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Julie Lind.
Thanks, Rosale. Good evening, Mayor Flores, council members and staff. I'm Julie Lind with the San Mateo Labor Council and representing 105 affiliated unions and over 95,000 workers and their families countywide, including thousands of which who reside in South San Francisco. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the thoughtful conversations you've already had about how South San Francisco can ensure that public projects deliver real public benefit. I want to take a moment to recognize the collective leadership of this council in advancing the conversation about a citywide project labor agreement. The idea was first raised for discussion back in early September. And since then, several of you have voiced thoughtful support and brought forward perspectives rooted in equity, fiscal response, fiscal responsibility, and community values. We've also been in some conversations with your staff. That kind of leadership, steady, collaborative, and forward-looking matters. It reflects the council that's not only responsive to the moment, but intentional about shaping the future of South San Francisco. A council that understands the importance of protecting taxpayer dollars, investing in good local jobs, and ensuring that our public projects reflect the priorities of the people we serve. A project labor agreement is more than a construction tool. It's a community investment strategy. It ensures that when South City builds, it builds with highly trained local workers who earn fair wages and benefits. It guarantees safe work sites, quality craftsmanship, and projects completed on time and on budget. In short, PLAs make sure public funds serve the public, not low-road contractors cutting corners. They also open doors. PLAs create a partnership and local hire opportunities and give young people and underrepresented workers a pathway into careers, careers that sustain families and strengthen neighborhoods. When we invest in public infrastructure through a PLA, we're not just building roads, libraries, and housing in South City. We're building the local workforce that'll maintain and grow this city for decades to come. Further, PLAs protect the bottom line. They help prevent costly disputes and delays, set clear standards, and make sure every contractor is playing by the same fair rules. They ensure accountability, transparency, and results. We've already seen this model succeed right here in our county. SFO has been under a PLA for decades, covering tens of billions of dollars in construction. San Mateo Community College District is built under a PLA on multiple bond measures, including the current one. County of San Mateo had an agreement in place for years, which the board recently voted to expand countywide. City of Daly City approved a citywide project labor agreement last month, and it will take effect on January 1st. Because the results of project labor agreements speak for themselves: quality projects, stable budgets, and meaningful community benefits. So tonight, I urge you to follow their lead and consider adopting a citywide project labor agreement for South San Francisco, one that guarantees that when we invest public dollars, we reinvest them back into our people, our neighborhoods, and our future.
Thank you.
Moving on to Joey Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and to everyone here. I'd like to start off and talk about two things. First is the fact that it is Native American Heritage Month. And in the proclamation, we spoke about uplifting stories and trying to serve our Native American communities, but that needs to be supplemented with action. And it's important to recognize for everyone here as well that in California, we have approximately 107 to 109 Native American tribes that never had official treaties ratified by the United States Senate because of the greed of settlers here. We all descend from immigrants unless we are Native American to California. And so it's important, as city council members, to identify partners that are Native American, specifically Remitsish' Oloni within South San Francisco, and do things, inform partnerships, such as Public Land Trust, to make sure that they have the resources they need to thrive in the land that they are indigenous to. So that's the first part of what I wanted to say tonight. The second is about federal policy, specifically ICE. Recently, due to the Trump administration, our country has been under attack and attacking those who are most vulnerable. And I'm talking about immigrants. Specifically, low-income, marginalized, working-class people are demonized as criminal, as criminals, as rapists, and as villains. And I think that, I know and I understand that the city council has limited capacity to respond to federal policy. But it's also important to recognize that there are things that we can do. We can host Know Your Rights workshops. We can make sure that none of the public funds that are used to fund the police right here are supporting immigration officers when they come into our communities and they rip them apart. Because it will be soon when they start knocking, and they probably have already started knocking on people's doors and going to Home Depots and taking people from their communities that they live and that they serve and that they work in. And so it's important that we do something, not only as collective community members, but also as a city council to make sure that our immigrants feel safe and they feel protected, at least by the city council. Because state policy and federal policy is much, much different. And those things are unfortunately out of this body's control. But there is something that we can do as community members to make sure that our immigrant friends, neighbors, community members, and workers have the protection and the safety that they need to keep living amidst these tumultuous times. And so I am urging action on both of these fronts, on Native American partnerships, specifically with the Remitsish' Oloni members in the South San Francisco community, and for immigrants, whether Latino, Filipino, all other categories that need protection. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, correct me if I'm wrong if I say any of this. So I will make sure that I'm reading from information you have provided. The Economic Community Development Department here in South San Francisco will be hosting two additional Know Your Rights workshops for the community in the month of November. One, Monday, November 17th, from 6:00 to 7:00. This is a residential, community-focused presentation, actually the third or fourth that we've had in the city. This will take place in our economic, or EAC, sorry, on Grand Avenue. And we have a second one, Wednesday, November 19th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. This will be employer-focused and will be virtual as a webinar. Both will be available in English and Spanish and will be presented by Siren, who's a Santa Clara nonprofit working with our city to put these Know Your Rights workshops together.
That's correct.
Thank you. Next, next item, or next, next person.
That conclude, well, I do have Larry Rosales sign up, but he would like to speak on item number five. So we'll move on. I don't see any raised hands in Zoom. Go ahead, Fiona.
Good evening, council members. I am an immigrant, and I am not afraid. I am grateful that the Trump administration is dispersing ICE to protect the citizens and the legal immigrants of this country. I'm grateful for law enforcement that put their lives on the line every single minute they wear a uniform, or not. You are not grateful for that You are not grateful for that because you support the invasion of the United States of America that was unleashed by the Biden administration. It is clear from your comments. On another topic, public construction projects benefiting the public? I think we know who those public construction projects benefit. Right, Mr. Coleman, Mr. Flores, Mr. Adiego, Ms. Nicholas, Mr. Nagalas? The documents speak for themselves. Where are the permits for the work that Fire Chief Matt Sampson obtained $2.5 million from FEMA? Where are the permits for that work at the MSB? Where are they? Where are the inspections for that work? They don't exist, do they? No matter which way the South San Francisco Citizens Coalition tries to obtain those permits and those inspections, for over $2 million obtained by our Fire Chief, Mr. Sampson, there is no way you will produce those permits or inspections because they don't exist. So did you commit federal financial fraud with what you supposedly did at the MSB and stole the senior center from the seniors in the city? Thank you.
I forgot to mention this in the beginning of public comment. The city acknowledges that members of the public have the right to be heard, but the city also wants to emphasize that we have zero tolerance policy for discriminatory and harassing conduct. The city denounces any hate speech that may be vocalized during public comments, and speakers making public comments are not expressing the views of the city. Next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now move on to administrative business item number seven, which is the 2025 legislative
Shall I start?
It's my pleasure to introduce you, Nicolau DeLuca, from Townsend Public Affairs. We invited Nicolau to provide just a brief summary of some of the legislative actions that have happened this year that could, that will impact South San Francisco. There are many more, so these are some of the highlights. And with that, I will turn it over to Nicolau.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Welcome, Mr. DeLuca. Thank you for joining us remotely.
Honorable Mayor and council members, it is my pleasure. Thank you very much for the invitation tonight. I will be respectful of your time. I have a handful of slides that I'll go through, and of course, happy to answer any questions you all, of course, may have. So next slide, please. So a quick overview of the 2025 legislative session. It ended on October 13th. And from when session started in January of this year, 2,397 bills were introduced. That is a lot of legislation. Going through the process, 917 bills ended up on the governor's desk. Of those 917, he signed 794, which is what we call chapter. He signed those into law. One of them was our sponsored bill, which I will get into. And then he vetoed 123 bills. Next slide, please. Just another quick overview. The way the year started, as you all may recall, was a gigantic deficit, about $12 billion and higher. And the way that the legislature addressed this gap was they did some borrowing, they used some reserves, and they did some cost shifts. So fortunately, we ended this year with a balanced budget. Of concern will be kind of the reliance on one-time fixes, which they did this year, and then any potential future deficits. But also, something that we're keeping an eye on and we're keeping the city closely in the loop on is the state of California and the Washington, D.C. federal dynamics. HR1 was signed into law, and we're now just kind of seeing the ramifications of that. So going into January, by January 10th, the governor will do his budget introduction, and we will provide the city with really clarity on what we would be looking at. So just kind of flagging that. Whereas we're heading into potentially rocky waters, but the state legislature has done a great job of really balancing the budget with different cost shifts and what have you. Next slide, please. So kind of what were some of the big topics this year? Really kind of breaking it down into five main topics. Of course, as the city manager said very well, there is a handful of different items that were going on, but really the cap and invest reauthorization was a very, very big deal. As you all know, that was a cap and trade program, and it was reauthorized this year, which is of great news to not only transportation, but also affordable housing and open space and other issues. There was the six-bill energy package, and as we go further into the presentation, I will talk about that. Of course, the immigration response and what was happening in D.C., that spurred a lot of pieces of legislation. Congressional redistricting next week, Prop 50. It's election day, so there was a lot of efforts and movements on that. And then new Senate leadership, more specifically, current pro temp. McGuire will be stepping down officially on November 17th, and Senator Monique Lamon will take his position as the pro temp of the Senate. Next slide, please. So, all right, now we're going to really kind of get into the brass tacks and items that we really care people about. I definitely want to thank the mayor, Councilmember Coleman, Assistant City Manager Rich Lee, the city manager, and others on all the work we put together for SB 390. That was a bill specifically sponsored by South San Francisco, and essentially, it would allow the Mellow Roots Community Facilities District to move forward even with properties that had open space easements. Very, very proud of the coalition and the teamwork between our team and the city. Shows you a lot of the work that we did, drafting language, securing an author, sponsorship letters, committee testimony. Grateful for the mayor and Councilmember Coleman for coming up to Sacramento and providing testimony to really help get that bill all the way to the governor, and very, very proud to say that he signed that into law. So it's certainly something that we should be very, very proud of. Next slide, please. So up next is SB 42, and this was signed by the governor. And really, just in plain terms, what this bill does is it puts the idea of publicly-funded elections on the ballot in '26 and outlines how it would be managed and updated if approved. This is for a public financing system for state and local election campaigns, and it also clarifies a few things. So something to be, something of note going to the voters in November of '26, and again, signed by the governor to be placed on the ballot. Next slide, please. So Senate Bill 63, as you all are very familiar because it impacts you based on Caltrain, BART, and what have you. What this bill does is it sets up a transportation revenue measure district, which covers the counties of Alameda, Contra Costa, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara County. It allows the district to propose a sales tax that would last for 14 years, and this also is going to appear on the November 26 ballot. The money raised, if signed, if approved by the voters, would go towards funding public transit operations for Bay Area transit agencies and would be managed by MTC. There was a lot of effort on this bill. Senator Weiner and Senator Ergen really leaned into this and did a heck of a job getting this all the way through the legislature and then signed by the governor. And then again, after I run through these slides, I'm happy to answer any questions. Next slide, please. So another bill, SB 79 by Senator Weiner, that's got a lot of discussion and a lot of fanfare. What this bill does, which was also signed by the governor, this bill says that if a housing project is planned near a major transit stop, like a train or bus station, it must be allowed to be built on land already zoned either for housing, mixed use, or commercial use, as long as it meets certain rules and criteria. What's interesting about this bill is it also allows transit agencies to set their own zoning rules for land that they own in those transit areas. This was a very, very close vote. It was, I think, amended 15 times, and it showed the focus and the hard work of Senator Weiner pushing this bill all the way to the governor. Next slide, please. And this bill, SB 707, also received a lot of discussion. This is something I'm very proud of our team here at TPA for working on very closely to get a lot of amendments. I will definitely say that this bill, what was signed into law was not a perfect version. There is some discussion about potential cleanup. But in short, SB 707, the focus was really to modernize how local agencies handle remote hearings, translations, accessibility, and disruptions while clarifying timelines and compliance with existing law. The bill updates the rules of how local government bodies hold public meetings under, you all know, the Brown Act. There was a lot of amendments towards the last two weeks of session. One of them was that this delays implementation till July of next year, and then a handful of other amendments based on disruption, what special districts are included and what's not, and many other technical issues that I'm happy to help address. Next slide, please. So kind of, we're getting towards the end of this presentation. Immigration bills, there's the key, key focus, because during legislative session, there was a lot going on with immigration and some of the ICE raids. Really kind of here, these are really the five key bills. Assembly Bill 49 about prohibiting schools from allowing ICE officers on campus without a warrant. SB 81 from Senator Ergen about prohibiting immigration enforcement from entering restricted areas of a health facility without a warrant. SB 98, SB 627 from Senator Weiner about prohibiting federal and local law enforcement from wearing masks. And then SB 805, again, from Senator Perez, that requires that law enforcement officers identify themselves while conducting their duties. So all these bills were signed into law and will go into effect starting in January. Next slide, please. Climate, I had mentioned earlier, kind of the cap and trade and some of the climate legislation. The two main bills on cap and trade or cap and invest were Assembly Bill 12, excuse me, 07 from Assembly Member Irwin and Senate Bill 840 from Senator Lamon. What these two bills did was they extended the cap and invest program through 2045, renamed it, and made some modest changes on offsets, price ceilings and adjustments, enhanced transparency in how the revenues would be invested and used. A lot of the cap and trade funding, there was some uncertainty as to what would happen. So a lot of the auctions weren't doing that well the last one or two auctions ago, but knowing that it's now been extended, there's the anticipation that the auctions will go well, these funds will be able to be used for grade separation, affordable housing, and some other carbon offsets. And then just kind of looping it up, SB 5, SB 254 from Senator Becker. This bill basically makes several changes to how electric companies in California are regulated. It covers things like public funding and ownership of power transmission lines, managing wildfire prevention, handling wildfire damage claims, speeding up clean energy projects. And it's a very, very rich, encompassing bill that Senator Becker got signed into law. And then quickly, AB 825, which allows a California independent system operator and electric utilities to, that manages to join or use regional energy markets as long as certain rules and conditions are followed. Next slide, please. So as much as I'm the one speaking tonight, I want to give a tip of the cap to all of my awesome teammates that are shown here. A very busy year here in 2025, a very, very successful year, and really proud of the delegation, of the South City delegation that we work closely with, both of our senators, both of our assembly members. They all accomplished many, many pieces of legislation that were not only significant but very, very important to you all and your constituents. So with that said, I will stop talking. I am happy to answer any questions and really want to highlight how grateful I am and my team is for our strong partnership with South City, and very, thank you very much for the support this year and very proud of the work that we achieved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. DeLuca. Appreciate all your, your partnership and your collaboration, you and your team and the entire office, which you're part of. Want to open up for my council. If you have any comments or questions, we'll start off with Councilmember Nagalas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nicol, thank you for all the great work. I really appreciate it. And I know we talked a lot about SB 707, and I really appreciate you kind of just speaking on behalf of our city in terms of kind of the concerns we have. One of the things that I remember SB 707 talked about was one of the requirements, and I don't know if it's still there, that we had to provide translating services if, for those online. Is that still part of the bill? And then if it is, does it talk about funding? Because now that's a added service to the city that has, that we have to provide.
Absolutely. So, Councilmember, I really appreciate a lot of your support and feedback because you're one of the first to really talk about this with me about some of the concerns. I remember especially around hate speech and others. So yes, translation is still part of the bill. However, there has been a commitment from the author, Senator Durazo, to kind of clean up some of the requirements along translation services. There has been a lot of concerns, and we helped voice that, about unfunded mandates, and some of the requests are now being put on the backs of cities, and where's the funding going to come from? But yes, translation is still part of it. There has been a commitment to kind of further clarify and make some changes to some of the requirements along translation services. Our team has already spoken with the committee staffer to get a sense of what's coming and how we can weigh in. And as soon as we get a better kind of line of sight, we're going to loop the city and make recommendations and suggestions on some alternatives or changes that we'd like to see.
Nicol, I would recommend maybe reaching out to our school district because they do provide translating services. And I know the mayor is familiar with this when he was working on the school board in terms of providing translating services. I think it's in person. I don't remember if it's online, but yeah, I think definitely reaching out to our school district to see how they do it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, and we're happy to do so.
And then I had a question about kind of the next steps for SB 390 now. And this might be more of staff kind of getting involved. So now that we pass it, what's our timeline? What are our next steps to kind of move forward with this?
And that would, yeah, that's definitely more on the staff side now that it's been kind of talked about.
You're talking SB 390, is that right, Councilmember?
Yes, that's correct.
This is something that we're going to need to return to council for in terms of the, the timing of proceeding with the CFD, but it does open a door and make it more, you know, a better possibility that we could get a majority of the property owners east to 101 to approve a CFD. But the timing remains to be seen, and I think that's something we'll be coming forward with you probably in the new year.
Thank you.
Because I know we've done a lot of preliminary work up to this point, and so I think we just continue that. And then for SB, SB 79, for the upzoning along transit corridors, I mean, we've, we've done a lot of that already in our general plan. And I think I read that in our staff report, that we've actually kind of done above and beyond. But what I'm kind of interested in is the, the state destiny, the state density bonus. Is that still required? Is that allowed in this particular legislation that, that someone could use that in terms of building affordable housing in terms of?
I'll double check. My, my memory is yes, density bonus is still part of the bill. And to address your first question, you, obviously with your Caltrain stations and your BART stations. For some Bay Area cities, this bill you all were already doing. And that was also used as an example of a handful of cities that are so close to Caltrain or BART or Muni or what have you are already doing a lot of this upzoning work. So it was really kind of getting others to kind of catch up. But my recollection is yes, density bonus is still there. What I will do is double check and then shoot a note off to the city manager to verify.
And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, Nicol, thank you all for your great work for the, for advocating, I know there's a set for the vehicle license fee. That is still an issue for San Mateo County, and I know we'll probably come forward again. And so we'll be asking for your help in terms of making sure that San Mateo County gets our fair share in terms of the vehicle license fee. I don't know if you have any updates about that, what it looks like potentially for next year?
No, I mean, with session ending October 13th, it was really two weeks ago, there's sort of the, you take a pause because a lot, it's been, it's been a heck of a session. And there was, I just recently bumped into someone from the governor's office, they kind of... of took their break, but now they're coming back. Now is a time where a lot of legislators and others are thinking about what's their budget ask, what's it going to look like, what's the plan for '26? So a lot of discussions already happening. Really want to tip my cap to Assembly Member Pepin in her office. I know how hard that they worked on the, on the VLF issue. We're very focused and doggeded on this, along with our delegation of Assemblywoman Stephanie, Senators Becker and Weiner. So I would suspect another opportunity to keep pushing and pushing, but definitely this is part of the agenda on behalf of South City and happy to keep working on it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else want to comment or provide any questions to Mr. Nicol? Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate this update. Appreciate, again, the great work that you do partnering with our city, Nicol and team. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say with respect to those that specifically apply to South San Francisco, so just 707, we'll be following up. We want to be very careful in the interpretation, and Sky may want to say a word here.
Yeah, we're, we have a memo ready to go, and we'll, we'll send a copy of it to council as well about SB 707. And we are also working on a memo about SB 79, and we'll make sure council gets a copy of that to understand more about it. It's a, it's a fairly complicated bill and understanding how to implement it and how, and the interplay with the many housing laws that have already been passed in the past few years. It's a lot to get our arms around, but we want to make sure that staff and council are informed about it.
Yeah, thank you. In particular, 707, really quickly, it's because it will present, you know, potential budget changes for the city clerk's office to be able to pay for interpreters. In properly, I read something that also established a mini website of sorts in other languages for access to the, the public meetings and also other Brown Act bodies and commission, boards and commissions as well, so.
Yeah, so one of the things we're doing is, is taking a very close look at exactly what's required in terms of translation services because of the significant budget impacts and make sure we've fully understood those so that the clerk's office and ultimately council will understand what's required and be in a position to evaluate how to implement those.
Great, thank you. Any public comments?
No public comments on this item, Mayor.
Remote or in public or in person, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you again, Nicol. Appreciate your making the time to come and present, and Godspeed to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate the partnership and you all being so easy to work with, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Moving on to administrative business, item number five is a report regarding a Fire Station 63 project update and two resolutions approving amendments to the consulting services agreement with Kitchell CEM for program and construction management services and Smith Group Incorporated for architectural design services for the civic campus projects. Item 5A and 5B are the resolutions.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Diego, council members both in the room and online. Jake Gilchrist, your Director of Capital Projects. Apologies if I go a little slow. I'm recovering from eye surgery, and the bright lights are quite challenging for reading my notes. We are marking an important moment in the history of the Fire Station 63 project tonight, and that we're after eight years of the, of the architects being under a ward of contract. We are finally able to present you with some preliminary design plans and a schedule and a budget. But I don't want to lose sight of the items that are before you tonight and the resolutions, which are actually amendments to the contracts for Kitchell Construction Engineering Management and Smith Group, the master architects for the project. So first, I'm going to ask Ken Litwin, master architect for the community civic campus from Smith Group, to speak to provide some context for the project. Following him, Chief Sampson is going to come up to remind us of the urgency for the need of Fire Station 63's replacement. And then finally, the expert fire station architect who is a subconsultant to Smith Group, Alan Kawasaki from Shaw Kawasaki, will come up to present the preliminary design. I will then have an update or a conversation with you around the reasons for the amendments to the two contracts and the overall project budget and schedule. Also in the room is Farshid Samzami from Kitchell as well. But first up is Ken Litwin.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Diego, council members. I'm Kenneth Litwin with Smith Group. We are the master architects for the Measure W Community Civic Campus, which is comprised of the PD, LPRC, and the new Fire Station 63. Design for all three buildings began in 2018. At the time, the fire station project site was located at the corner of Arroyo Drive and Camaritas Avenue, adjacent to the MSB. The design proceeded into the design development phase and then was put on hold while the construction of the PD projects and the LPRC progressed. During the pause, the city reevaluated the project site. The concern was that if the project remained in the current location, the existing fire station would not be operational during the construction of the new fire station, and this would adversely impact the city's emergency services and increased response times. For reference, if you go back one, the 2019 Fire Station 63 design was a one-story, 8,800 square foot building with three apparatus bay, apparatus support, living areas, sleeping quarters, and training facilities. In 2021, the fire station architect, Alan Kawasaki, was asked to do a feasibility study for the site across the street at 71 Camaritas Avenue, bottom left on the slide. The study determined that the fire station could move across the street. The main difference would be that the new site would require a two-story building and would benefit from an access road from Arroyo to the back of the apparatus bay. The two-story building would meet all of the fire department's programmatic needs and allow for the city's emergency services to remain open as the new Fire Station 63 is constructed. The city directed the design team to proceed with the new site in May of 2025, or this year. If we can go to the next. So the current design is just beginning the design development phase. The intent is to open summer of 2028. The project location is now the 71 Camaritas Avenue. The main difference being that it's two stories rather than one, and it'll be 10,150 square feet with the same program as the 2019 design. Alan Kawasaki from SKA will present the current, current design in more detail after Chief
Good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Diego, and council members. Matt Sampson, your fire chief, and I'll take you through some of the operational need for the replacement here of Fire Station 63. Today, as it stands, Station 63 is the city's busiest, and it's held that distinction now for almost three decades. The fire station's home to both Engine 63 and Rescue 63, which normally have five personnel assigned to the station daily, but can increase to six based on operational need or if we're training a new paramedic student itself. The station underwent a pretty significant remodel in 2010, and it did so to address some health and safety issues that we had faced prior to that time. And the station had closed three times for health and safety issues, beginning in 2005, 2007, and then again ahead of the construction phase going in. And those were primarily from water leaks with mold and then carbon monoxide intrusion from the parking garage behind the station. So the grant monies were really focused on addressing those health and safety issues and allowing the fire department to remain in that location because geographically it's very advantageous to stay west of El Camino, as most of the district's calls are on west of the street itself. In addition to the health and safety concerns that were addressed, we were able to use the money to address some of the seismic issues that came with the station. We were able to enlarge the apparatus bay so that our engines would actually fit, the entire fleet would actually fit. And we were able to modernize the station to allow for a new modern workforce, meaning gender-specific living areas, specifically, excuse me, the sleeping quarters and then the bedrooms itself. The fire station serves primarily the El Camino corridor roughly from South City High all the way up to the Colma border, north, northeast along Mission Road, and then west to Junipercero. And because of its geographic location, it's able to support Station 61, 65, and 64 should they be on a call. And so it's, it's quite an important component of our response. And then for visually, you can see its primary response area, the star being Fire Station 63 just across the street from where we're at right now. It does cover quite a bit of the city itself. I mean, this, this area is somewhat busy. Like I said, this station is the busiest in the city and has been that way for almost 30 years. So the station, as it sits today, is operationally limited. And the genesis of this is because the facility was never designed to house a fire station. And we got a reminder of that in 2010 in the picture on the right. When we started the demolition as part of the remodel, we discovered and were able to truth out the lore that this was an auto center. And inside, we actually found an old keyboard where you hung your keys when you went to drop off your car. But the operational limitations, the crux really are the storage and the space, the facility itself. This was a decision to move into this building in the late 70s, and it was always passed on that this was a temporary location until a more adequate-sized facility could be established and then actually constructed. In addition to the space limitations, we do have some concerns around the seismic stability of some of the surrounding areas. We were able to address some of them in the grant, specifically to the station itself based on the grant limitations. But also the station remains dependent on the support function from the MSB. So we get power, water, backup power from that building and are dependent on that aging infrastructure as well. And the station also is still a backend station, something we like to eliminate, meaning that when the engine and the ambulance return from a call, they must actually back into the station, usually a three-point turn, and it's very limited for that. You know, going back to the, the real storage issues, we can only store two pieces of apparatus here. And that means the other stations are asked to take on that burden. And those stations have been outgrown with our reserve apparatus as well, so unfortunately we have to park some of them outside 365 days a year, which leads to an accelerated degradation of those equipment, something we don't like to see, but we just don't have the storage facility or space to be able to do that. We don't actually have any specialized functions for the station, meaning we don't store additional hose here, additional supplies, emergency supplies, emergency food, because there's not really a place to put it. And again, that burden is shifted to the other stations, which are quickly growing too. And when you look at the actual size, Fire Station 63 is the blue line in the graph, and then the number of assigned personnel minimum daily, pretty high number of personnel, relatively speaking to the size of the station, so that paints it. And then if you look at stations across the Bay Area, excuse me, you know, locally here, but some in the Bay Area, you see Fire Station 63 on the right. To the left, the closest square footage is the San Mateo Station, and it'll have three people on duty every day. And I believe Fairfield Station 36 and Palo Alto 3 are the same. So undersized as well relative to other fire stations or other fire facilities within the region. So when we look to identify what would be a solution, how do we address these issues? We want to take a comprehensive approach to address as many as we can, as well as build in some ability to future-proof should additional needs or burdens fall on the fire department. The facility would not need to go, undergo any major remodel or work to be able to support those. The big ones are going to be focused on health and safety and then the storage component of it. You know, a modern facility that's structurally sound, built to a critical facility level that's independent, detached, and also has new supports features such as a backup generator, water lines, things like that. That's very important, especially when we're looking at resiliency in advance of a major incident. The station will also have room to support additional staff should we need a flux, a flex, excuse me, during a natural disaster. Oh, sorry, I went too far ahead. I apologize. In a natural disaster, we'd be able to bring more people in. We'd also be able to store food supplies, not only for our own firefighters, but potentially the community. It would be a safe refuge area should we have a large event in the community as well. These people would be able to congregate in a building they knew that was safe and knew it would have power for it. We'd be able to store additional apparatus, at least two there, which would be a big benefit, get some of those out of the backyard of Fire Station 61. And it would come with all the modern amenities that a fire station should have. You know, one of the ones that's highlighted there is a dedicated exercise space. Right now, the personnel assigned to Fire Station 63 are utilizing a fire, an exercise area that's, that's a little bit further away from the station than we would like it to be, so that we remain ready to go for that. And with that, those are what we're trying to accomplish with this new fire station replacement, being able to address these things. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to the principal architect for the design of the fire station, Alan Kawasaki.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name again is Alan Kawasaki, and we are one of, maybe a couple architects in Northern California who are doing majority of the work in fire station replacements here in Northern California. And you know, what you find is what you, your situation, so many old stations built from the time, you know, after World War II, what happened is that, you know, the GIs come back and we're, we're expanding the suburbs and all the communities, and you build a firehouse, then another, and then another. They're all being replaced. So congratulations. I mean, essential service code now is such that the stations are designed to survive an earthquake. They're designed for the health and safety of the personnel. These are all important to the community for the ability of services to be available to the community. So I'm going to go through, let's see, and talk about the site and floor plan. So as was spoken, that it's sort of an L-shaped site, and you're probably aware of the, the lower horizontal portion where there's a long driveway. That is in the easement, the PUC easement. So below that are the water lines, the city of San Francisco. But we're being allowed to use that easement for our driveway and to be able to turn into the rear of the, the fire station. We can also temporarily use that rear apron print for just miscellaneous drills or other things on a temporary basis for the fire department. So the footprint, I mean, you can see the footprints. It's a sort of a triangular site, and what we want to do is we want to maximize, we want to get as, as much as we can on that and as efficiently as, as we can. So inherently, when you're doing a multi-story fire station, it's going to be larger because you have elevators and stairs, shafts, things like that. But we did need to go vertical because the site could not support all the program elements in a single floor. We needed also for this site to be able to have parking, parking not only for, there's a gate you can kind of see, but parking for the public should they come, but also the parking for the fire personnel. And there is, there are two ways to get into the building for the fire personnel. You can kind of, oh, does this one have a, no, it doesn't. Below the word Fire Station 63 in the square footage, there's, there's kind of a square. That's an accessible parking space, so we have to have accessible parking spaces not only for personnel, but also for the public. And then there's another accessible spot for the public on the public side of the gate. So two different entries. The entry for the fire personnel will be a long, there's, there's a fence, but runs along Westboro, and they, and they enter, actually, there's a patio back there, and there's an exercise room, which you'll, you'll see in the floor plans. But I'm going to walk you through with the public, how you would formally get into the, into the station. So if you were to walk along Camaritas and you're walking towards Westboro, you'll see that there is a plaza, entry plaza with a couple steps and a ramp that goes up. And there's a lobby there, and so that's a secure lobby as public enter the, the station. And of course, where the personnel are may be scattered through the building, but the captain's office you'll see, and then there's the watch office, which is for the, the personnel they can also see into the apparatus bay. So those are in orange, and then in yellow is circulation. And note that in that circulation, there's a stairs, a sort of a widening stairs, and in the center of that, you'll see a circle. That's a, you know, traditional fire pole. So you can come up from the second floor, you can, you can drop down inside that void in the, in the stair. And I know it may seem odd, but requirements are, federal requirements, ADA. We have to be able to get folks up to the second floor. I know, you know, board members. I have a, a client has board members and they're in wheelchairs, they need to be able to visit, and public are invited. So it is a requirement to have that elevator. Other things on this floor, the big thing is the light pink, where the drive-through apparatus base, and there's three of them. And the dark pink, those are all support, we call them apparatus support, you know, where they store their turnout, how they clean it, how they clean other equipment, fill water bottles, all that support stuff is in pink. The green is that exercise area that the chief talked about. You don't have that right now in, in your current firehouse. It's required to have an exercise place. And then there's a patio. So as you come out through those double doors, that patio, it's a covered patio. Oftentimes, we pull equipment out, you know, in the summertime, and we might put the bicycle out there, and, and you can exercise there. And then the gray area, those are just mechanical, electrical, there's also a public bathroom. And what we're currently looking at is the big tip right now. There are several opportunities there, and we can talk about that. So if we go upstairs, take the stairs up or take the elevator up. So if we go upstairs, take the stairs up or take the elevator up, along Camaritas in blue, you can see the six dormitories, dorm rooms, and they have, they're individually occupied, single occupancy, so that allows for either men or women to have privacy. And then they can go across the hall to single occupancy bathrooms, and there's the laundry. And then the yellow part is the day room, where they, you know, spend the day, the kitchen, dining areas, storage for kitchen items. And then in the far right, we're proposing a study at the tip of the station. Just to give you an idea of what we're looking at in terms of how this might look, and one of the things to, you know, we're very cognizant of, it's a civic building. It's something which expresses the protection the citizenry get. So wonderful to see the fire apparatus, right? You're driving along, and you have that confidence. Here are the fire apparatus, here's the protection being provided by the city. So it's in a glass box, the apparatus drive-through, and it's glass at both ends. Then as we move to the left, you can see that entry that I spoke of with the dormitories above. And then on the corner, there's yet another glass box. In that glass box, we have a study upstairs, and we're looking at various options, maybe a conference room downstairs, or another one could be, well, maybe we'll take one of the historic fire apparatus and put that on exhibit. And then at nighttime, you know, imagine driving down Westboro. So Westboro is, of course, a major entry point into the city. So we thought, one of the advantages of this site versus the other site, this site is actually an opportunity to announce the civic buildings that are within this district. So we thought the opportunity would be great. In fact, we're thinking like, we have a screen that we're showing. In this screen, we were thinking of like, having a screening, an image, perhaps a historical image, or perhaps super graphics, something that says, this is, you know, South San Francisco and/or its history. And then, as I mentioned, there's an opportunity for some kind of display on the ground floor. The wall that you see below that screen, that is the wall, so behind that is the exercise, outdoor exercise area, and also the way it connects back to the rear apron. And then at night, of course, presence of the building as a beacon during the evening. And then seeing the building as you're, you know, from uphill coming into the city, there's two kinds of treatments of the walls that we're looking at. One of these treatments is, has to be lightweight because it's over the top of those, the water lines, and it has to be able to be designed to be removable should they exercise their right to access the pipes. And you'll see that sort of cutout with the orange, there's a deck on that second floor. So then the fire personnel have a place where they can, you know, decompress and/or, and put a barbecue in there and whatnot, and peek to the rear of the fire station. So I guess this goes back to you, Ken?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just going to touch briefly on the, some sustainability features. The project is designed to meet the CBC CalGreen 2025 entitled 24 Energy Code. The project will use the LEED version 4 framework to incorporate sustainability measures into the design and construction of the project, similar to PD and LPR. There are three sustainability features that are a little bit non-standard that I'd like to highlight. Electric vehicle charging, priority parking for low-emission vehicles, car pools and electric vehicle charging stations will be provided for building staff and visitors. And additionally, the project is proposing an innovative strategy to provide the electrical infrastructure for future fire, excuse me, future EV fire engines, which are currently under development. So that is a kind of unique sustainability feature for the building. And then it says at the bottom there, electrification of HVAC systems. This will, it'll be all systems. This will be one of the first all-electric fire stations in the Bay Area. So that's a kind of very progressive development. And then finally, on the next slide, in terms of onsite power generation, the California Energy Commission's new code requires all new buildings shall be installed with a PV array and a battery energy storage system. The new fire station will require roughly 26.6 kilowatts of direct current PV-generated capacity, and that battery energy storage system will capture that excess PV-generated power during the day, which will reduce the building's energy consumption and operational utility costs. I'll turn it over to Jake.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. As for the resolutions before you tonight, I'll get into this in a sec, but overall, we're targeting construction for late summer of 2026. And the cost information I'm providing is all assuming that we would be beginning construction in approximately August of next year. The current total project budget is $37.3 million, which is up from $32 million in 2022, which is about a 4% year-over-year increase since early 2022. The two resolutions before you are, one, to increase Smith Group's contract approximately $400,000 or $396,000 from $3.4 million to $3.8. As a total cost of construction, as a percentage of the total cost of construction, that's 14%, which has been consistent across PD and LPR, and is in fact just their consistent number across the entire community civic campus, including the planning. The second resolution is for a $650,000 increase in Kitchell CEM's consulting contract from $2.1 to $2.75 million, which equals roughly 10% of the total cost of construction. They, with construction project management costs, they fluctuate a little bit more project to project. So for LPR, it was more like 4.5% because we still need the bodies out here every day during the duration of construction. Whereas with a smaller project like PD, PD was trending at about 8%. This project construction cost is about 80% of what PD was, and so they're trending at 10%, which is right in the range when you consider that typically these fees are between 5% and 15% for, as a percentage of the total cost of construction. And I think, oh, and I should also mention that across the board, all in Kitchell's contract is about $10 million for the overall community civic campus. Smith Group's would increase to 24.7, which against a $175 million of total construction across the three projects, means that Kitchell's fee is about 6% of the total cost of construction. And again, Smith Group's is consistent at 14%. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jake. Thank you, everyone, for presenting and the information provided to council. I will start off with questions from council members.
Public comment after.
After. Councilmember Nagales, any questions at the moment?
I just remember clarification for Chief Sampson. So at Station 63, you have five personnel. And as I look at this, it looks like you could accommodate six with, because I'm looking at the six dormitories, is that correct?
That's correct. And these dorms are slightly larger than what we have currently at the facility, in that extra space is utilized for a second bed. And so we have the ability to surge the capacity should we need to and be able to bed people down in a disaster or prolonged event.
And then the design, I mean, we're a little bit restricted in terms of the design because there are some restrictions in terms, because I remember the police station, there was some design limitations, and that's kind of the same thing with this as well. In terms of the federal law, I think that's what it was?
In terms of the grant monies?
Oh, in terms of, yeah, yes, or in terms of the design?
For this fire station right now, yes. But we currently were able to achieve through the creativity of the architects all the program access base that we would require.
Great, great. And I really appreciate, Chief Sampson, that you mentioned this is the busiest fire station. And, you know, you're working at, with five personnel in terms of the capacity. And, you know, the demand is only going to get bigger. As the city grows, there's going to be more services needed. I think having this fire station, having more capacity to provide services is going to be really key, because we know how fast you get to the site, and every second and every minute counts. And so if we're able to provide that with building a better space and better space for you, bigger and better space, I think we need to do that. You know, colleagues, you know, we built the Civic Center campus. We built the police station. We made a promise to our residents, you know, that we're going to build these things. And the other thing we promised was build a new fire station. And it's the last thing we have to do. And so I look forward to seeing this get accomplished, and I'm really excited about the kind of design of this and where we're going to take this. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. If there are questions, I'm just doing questions right now, and then we'll go for public comment, and then we'll come back for comment, statements.
Well, I do have a question. Is the design finalized?
Not at all. No, not at all. This is your first look at the design. I'll be back early next year, and then you will have to approve the design once the SEQA is completed. This is your first look and everyone's first look.
I do have comments on the design.
Sure.
I can wait till later.
Okay.
Let's move forward. Are there any public comments, virtual or in the House?
We have two public comments in person, one with Larry Rosales.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Flores, Vice Mayor Adiego, and council members, Larry Rosales, one of the vice presidents for IF Local 1507. We appreciate the time and consideration the council is dedicating to the process for securing a new fire station. We believe this has been a long overdue concern for the community. The current physical state of the station is not conducive for long-term habitation. Seismic issues persist with the current station. Living quarters are below grade and lack windows, and we also lack adequate fitness space. Our ability to provide adequate and effective emergency services is limited by the constrictions of Fire Station 63. Our city has simply outgrown the capabilities of this station. We hope you consider moving forward with providing our community an ability to receive the high level of emergency services they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cynthia Mercopolis?
Was there another meeting before this meeting? Because this was a short notice meeting in order to prohibit the public knowing what the, that the MSB was on the agenda. As far as the trades are needing development, there's plenty of contracts, and our councilmen have been taking donations from the trades, and that would indicate a conflict of interest. The MSB was completely and architecturally remodeled by a certified licensed architect in 1979 as a community building, including a senior services center. By Proposition P, the voters passed, that assessed their property $5 per $100 for 25 years. By the way, that's millions upon millions of dollars. Are you still collecting that money? We cannot find anything that shows that was a retired debt. In 2010, the general plan indicated the MSB was going to be demolished. So why did Captain, then Captain Sampson, apply for a $2.25 million FEMA grant to remodel and retrofit the MSB in 2008? In 2015, the building assessment report indicated the same repairs outlined in Sampson's FEMA application were still needed to be done. Where's the photos of the FEMA repairs done at that time? There's no permits for repairs, there were no inspection reports, there's no certificate of occupancy. In 2017, the city council adopted an outdated amendment to the 2010 general plan and did not mitigate, as required by law through SEQA, the MSB Senior Services Center. And that therefore deprived not only the taxpayers who paid for 25 years for the MSB, but also the 30,000 senior citizens of the city. Thank you.
We have no additional public comments in person, and I don't see raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll proceed with comments from council. Councilmember Nicholas, please.
We know that the health and safety of our residents is paramount. And of course, in order to ensure that, we know that we have to provide the health and, for the health and safety of our first responders. So in this case, you know, in the current situation, there is no second egress for their dormitories, and that's really one of the major issues that I think. And having a decontamination corridor is really something that I really like. The sustainability features are cherry on top, so I really would support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Coleman, we could go with your questions or comments.
Yes, thank you. So let me first start out by saying that, you know, we've looked at the facts, we've looked at the data, and it's very clear that when our firefighters say that they need a new fire station, that they should get one. And there's this thing called the passage of time, where, you know, we do have retrofits and upgrades, but as time goes on, buildings is old, sometimes they get a little too old and to where we need to, we need to move to a new facility. And so I've looked at the facts and data, I believe our firefighters, I believe our city staff, I think it's time. And definitely, it's not just about giving our firefighters the tools that they need to, you serve the community to the best of their ability, it's also about safety for our entire South City community. And I want to thank you for bringing this forward at this time. I really appreciate the sustainability features as well. My one concern is the facade of the building. I think painting it all black is not very inviting. And I would like to see if we could play around with the design a bit more, with the colors, to where it fit, you know, it really does fit more of the neighborhood than it's going to be. And I would like it to look more inviting to the community and kind of fit, you know, maybe, maybe the facade of the MSB and surrounding households, really, to see it really fit in and be something that the community can be really proud of. But other than that, I'm ready to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I'll go to my vice mayor.
I had an opportunity this morning to meet the chief out at the station and do another walkthrough, and it's been quite some time since I have. But I do, I have a long memory because I was involved at the very beginning of the municipal services building. I came on board in 1980, and I was part of an inspection of a partly completed project. Even at that time, it was general knowledge that the fire station was just kind of crammed in there. It was never an ideal situation. And the entire structure, we were looking at, we were told that it was a 30-year lifetime. By the time this new station is done, and it's most critical for the police station and the fire station, that they be modern and up to date and up to code. I think that, you know, 30 years was a long time ago from 1980, and by the time this station is finished, we'll be scratching it 50 years of use. So we've gotten some great use out of that. But quite honestly, I'm embarrassed as a councilman to walk through that and see how people have to live. No, I would not want to go to sleep in a bedroom that's less than half the size of the one I have in my small home in Sunshine Gardens and close the door and hope I can get out if something occurs. I mean, that's, it's just, I honestly wouldn't, unless I was sleeping next to somebody that snored loudly, I wouldn't close the door because I think it really is, it would be on my mind. So it is very much about, you know, safety and the health. We've been made aware of some of the deficiencies of the building that have resulted in the need to close and repair, and that's going to continue to occur. So we're well past the useful life of this building. And my only regret is that I won't be there for the grand opening, but I'll feel great when I drive by it and see what we were able to deliver by the actions tonight. And for the public, we, Jake, you mentioned that this is the beginning of a series of meetings to determine exactly what it would be and look like. The only question I might have is, I want to understand, because we are somewhat at the mercy of the San Francisco Water Department with that spectacular access you've used along the easement. But if that was down for a period of time, not at this meeting, but the next time we have a meeting, I need to know how you operate if that's down for a month or more.
Certainly.
But not tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Nagales?
Already made my comments in the previous, but I'm happy to move the item.
Before you do, I'm happy to share some thoughts here. I want to thank staff for being diligent on putting this together and update us all. And I also want to express my full and really enthusiastic support for the recommended actions before us tonight. This replacement of this station is not just long overdue. It's really a public safety imperative and a statement of the values that we've all been resonating here in our city. As it's been mentioned for decades, Fire Station 63 has operated under temporary conditions that were never intended to last this long. The facility has long been undersized, structurally constrained, and functionally inadequate for the demands placed on it, especially as our city has grown and evolved. Had a chance to tour with our city staff as well, the Kishiwara Fire Station in Kishiwara City in Japan this past summer, and reflected back on the condition of our fire stations. And like you, I couldn't respond when the firemen, firefighters said, is this like yours over there at home? As I walked through their fitness room, as I walked through their pantry and all of this, and I just kind of thought to myself, wow, this is, this is not what. We often take these trips to learn, to create ideas, and this is, this is our time to be able to step up. The other thing is the health and safety concerns as well. The impact on response time, and this is something very important that all residents here in South San Francisco should note. When Station 63 is out of service, is real measurable and real. Delays of up to three minutes in emergency response can mean the difference between life and death. This is not a risk we should be willing to take for the residents in the community that will be supported by this new station. This is smart. This is a strategic choice by this council. And also appreciate that you mentioned also the design components. Thoughtful planning on what would be coming along. EV planning, genius, right? Because that, we know that that's the future of our economy and where we're moving. The private dorms, the natural light, I had heard also, no, no windows who wants to be locked up. Also, the gender equity piece, right? Which is something else that we need to be able to support so that we can include female firefighters in adequate living conditions in a facility for the, built for the future. So acknowledge this fiscal responsibility embedded in this process. I want to thank also the Smith Group and partners for being able to bring this to modernize our entire city infrastructure. We bring people along. We bring people along, whether that's our parents and our caretakers in a childcare facility in Westboro, whether it's a park in District 5, whether it's our own employees and our own base, our own public safety that keeps our city safe. So I'm happy to move forward with confidence and with urgency in supporting our firefighters and building, continuing to build a stronger South City of the future. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the support. And yes, this is an ongoing dialogue. I'm sure we're still going to pencil out a lot of the details and look forward to working on that. And I am happy to second the motion by Councilmember Nagales. So that's a first and a second. And let's move forward with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adiego?
Yes.
Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagales?
Yes.
And I just kind of paused there because I wanted to make sure, City Attorney, that that's motion, both motions, or we got to take separate?
It's, it's fine in this case for the motion to be for both resolutions.
Okay. For the record, both administrative business items, 5A and 5B, moved and so approved.
Was that the motion that the councilman made?
Councilmember Nagales, do you want to restate your motion?
Yeah, that is the motion that I made to move both Item A and B.
Thank you for the clarification for the record.
And confirmation. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Item, item moves forward. Thank you, Jake, again. Next agenda item, please.
Moving on to item number six is a report regarding anticipated proceeds from the sale of DNA Way, Point San Bruno Boulevard, and a portion of Cabot Road to Genentech and potential uses of these funds.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm Sharon Ranals, your City Manager. I'm here this evening to give you a report that recommends that council understand what the funding projections from the sale of DNA Way, Point San Bruno Boulevard, and a portion of Cabot Road, our sale of that to Genentech. And I am seeking a council's concurrence to commit these funds to the construction of the new fire station that we just talked about. And I won't belabor some of the details about the fire station. I'm going to focus on a little bit of background and the financing here. So on June 25th, the council approved the sale of DNA Way, Point San Bruno, and a portion of Cabot Road for a purchase price of $25 million. We don't have the money in the bank yet, but the sale should close by the end of 2025, at which point the city will be able to transfer this to our general fund and dedicate those funds to a purpose that the council, a specific use. And I would mention that these funds are unrestricted. So again, allocation, in staff's recommendation, is that allocation of these one-time funds to construct what I would call a placemaking, legacy civic building that will serve current and future generations with these public safety amenities is a compelling use for these funds. As Jake mentioned, construction costs have continued to escalate over time. So to delay replacement of this facility will really just increase the cost that we'll be looking for, the amount of funding that will be needed. So I do, I did include in the staff report a section about the deficiencies of Fire Station 63 for the records. If somebody goes back to just read this staff report absent the prior one. But again, I will not belabor that because I think that's been covered really well here. So returning again to the financing, the proposed future fire station at this site, 71 Camaritas, the site was purchased by the city in 2021 for $5.5 million. That was funded with infrastructure reserve funds, and the intention was always the construction of a replacement fire station at this location. So at this point, as Jake covered, the project is estimated to cost $37.3 million in total, and $9 million has already been appropriated from community benefit funds, which was paid by Lane Partners in conjunction with the South Line Development. This initial $9 million appropriation is the pot of money that has been funding project management and design work to date. However, we are at the point that we need to get council direction in order to move forward because I, we don't want to continue without a funding source. So the project currently has a funding need of 28.3 million. So that's the 37.3 total cost minus the $9 million that's already been allocated. And so if we were able to allocate the $25 million from the Genentech sale, plus the $9 million that's already committed, that leaves us with a funding gap of 3.3 million still needed to fund the completion of the station. So we have a couple of suggested supplemental funding sources which could be used to cover that 3.3 million gap. This would include public safety impact fees, which do grow at a rate of about $500,000 a year. And that fund currently has an unencumbered fund balance of less than $2 million. Additionally, we do have approximately $1 to $2 million in Measure W revenue, while it's collected annually above and beyond what we need to make the bond payments. And those funds could be utilized to cover the 3.3 gap. And I would also make this the point that since the replacement of the fire station was identified as one of the primary civic campus goals of Measure W, it would be a very appropriate source of funding. So in order to adhere to the project schedule that Jake and the architects talked about, in order to start in 2026, we would, we need to allocate this funding, and the facility would open in late 2028. I think a point that I would want to make is that this is not general fund money. So for the public to understand, this is not related to our deficit. This is not a sales tax, property tax issue. These are one-time funds that we, we're very fortunate to get from Genentech, and we're proposing that we use these for this one-time allocation. Of course, dedication of the funds to this purpose would mean that other projects that the council might want to do, you know, it's going to allocate, it would allocate them all for this purpose. So just a little bit of a further recommendation. We understand that there's many projects and programs that council would like to pursue, and that staff would suggest that as part of your January retreat and part of the city's budget process next year, that staff come back with a more comprehensive view of how many, how much we're anticipating in developer fees, our childcare impact fees, the Measure W, what is the total reserve, and then line that up against some desired programs and projects and try to match those up. But at this point, we are hoping to allocate these DNA Way money for this purpose. So that really concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Appreciate the, the response there. We'll kick it off. If there are any immediate public comments?
No public comments for this one, Mayor.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? So, Councilmember Coleman?
So initially, this fire station project was meant to be funded by its Lane Partners, right? The Lane Partners Development. And I guess they're taking a little time, a little longer than expected, to complete their project. But how much more in impact fees are we expecting from Lane Partners?
I'm going to look at now. I don't have an answer to what the schedule is for Lane Partners, but I mean, it is a significant amount of money. But the fire station has also increased in price since the time we thought that it would cover the fire station.
If I could, I think the councilman is remembering the whiteboard that the prior city manager had, where he lined up numbers to reassure us. And turns out, there was a lot of conjecture on those, what was going to come in when.
Please.
Good evening, Nellie Lander, Economic and Community Development Director. The Lane Partners Development Agreement includes $25 million in community benefits fees, the first $9 million of which were included with, or were paid at the building permit issuance for the first phase, which is now complete. There are two more tranches of funds with a second and third phase. But those are dependent on the market rebounding and folks actually pulling building permits for commercial development. And what we've heard so far from the developer is it's unlikely to be anytime soon.
And those funds would be unrestricted?
Those are similarly unrestricted. The first $9 million that was invested in this fire station project that Jake is working through now with the design work from that project.
But they haven't pulled away from it. They're still committed, the developer?
At this point yet. I would not be surprised if they asked for a development agreement amendment to lengthen it out or potentially change uses. But at this point, they have that DA in place.
Right. Thank you. And I just want to start off by saying that I think the fire station's needed now, and we don't want prices to continue to rise. And, and we want to make sure it's built with current costs and not, you know, future costs, which could be, need more funding from, from other areas. But I do want to say that, you know, the, because of Lane Partners, I guess, taking longer than expected, initially, I had thought this would be a perfect source of funding to kick off, let's say, a revolving loan fund. And the reason I say that is, when you look at the need for affordable homes in South San Francisco, not to mention the Bay Area or California or the country, affordable housing funds through a form of low-income housing tax credits, but also the various grants that are available, are fully utilized. And we are not meeting the crisis with, with the funding that is needed to, to ensure that people stay in their homes and that, that they're able to purchase their homes and start families. And when you look at the model that was pioneered in Montgomery County, what they saw is not something unlike what we're seeing now. What they had was they had developments that they had approved through their county that were not able to break ground because they were, they were struggling to find the financing. And so they went to the county and said, look, you have this revolving loan fund. How about you offer us a loan that is, has lower interest rates than private equity, and get this project financed so that we can break ground? And that's what they did. And what happened is, the county, by providing that revolving loan fund, it's a five-year construction loan at 5% interest rates, they were able to get the housing built, which is important. They're able to increase the inclusionary percentage from 15 to 30%, and they have majority ownership of what is built. And so we can do that here in South San Francisco. The hardest part is finding that initial funding to make it possible. But I think we can definitely do it here in South San Francisco. Maybe, you know, instead of using this, the DNA Way funding, we use the Lane Partners funding, or maybe some of the other projects that, you know, hopefully will, will break ground sooner rather than later. But for this evening, I will be supportive of allocating the DNA Way dollars to the Fire Station 63. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nagales, let's go to you over there. If you have any questions or comments?
More of a comment. I agree that, you know, the construction costs are, are going to go up. And it's, it's best to start looking at the construction dollars now. And so, so I think using the $25 million to build this fire station is appropriate. I do agree with the city manager, like, at some point, I think we need to take a look at kind of forecasting in terms of at our January retreat, what our anticipated impact fees are, and I'm kind of lining up with, with projects. So, because I know all of us have, like, individual projects that we want to work on. And I think that's something we need to talk about as a group to kind of figure out how we're going to fund those projects. So I look forward to kind of having that deeper conversation. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
No, I do.
You do?
Yeah. So as we all know, there's always an infinite need, but only finite resources. And, you know, this $25 million is a, somewhat like a windfall. We were not expecting it. And it's also unrestricted. So for the sale of the DNA Way and others, I think it's just very appropriate to have a tangible monument. And, you know, we can take a look at it and say, see what we got out of it. So I really do support giving the $25 million for the construction of Station 63.
So the, the 25 are unrestricted funds. They could be used for housing or a fire station. And the Measure W, there was a time where we took some of the Measure W and put it into our general fund to kind of bridge a gap, and then we were able to backfill it. But those are basically unrestricted funds also?
They are generated by sales tax, and the bond money is, is quite dedicated. But the sales tax cash is unrestricted. It's general fund money. And Sky looks like he's going to say something there.
Just because, just because this issue often gets confused because of the passage of time. Measure W was proposed to the voters and approved as a general tax. Ultimately, the city council can allocate funds from it for any legitimate purpose. The revenue is, is largely dedicated to making payments on the bonds for a number of important facilities at this point. But any of the money that, that is unused for bonds is available for the council to dedicate to any, any public purpose.
Okay. And I mean, it certainly fits. And I think it was Councilman Nagales that said that, you know, the, the original idea was that Measure W would fund this project. So it's helping to fund the project. I'm comfortable.
Thank you. Colleagues, I really appreciate it. And I'm so excited about our fire station. As I said previously in the last agenda item, this is the time to do it. And it's important to focus on when we have this, this type of funds. And I'm, I'm so optimistic that we will turn a rainy day into a sunny day. And you will be invited, I promise, to be part of the ribbon cutting. And it will happen. I'm optimistic.
Mayor, can I come too?
Huh?
Can I come too?
Absolutely. We'll have a whole party, everything. Tonight, I want to just bring something up for, for relevance. And I just want to, my colleagues, to hear it, me, because I'm, I'm kind of sharing a little bit more of a personal, it's coming from really deep down in my heart. And this really is a matter that requires our, our kind of deep connection to our community. And, and it's urgent. And that's why I'm bringing it up in this, in this matter, in this form. As we all know, most recently, right now, the CalFresh program, the California's version of the federal supplemental nutrition assistance program, SNAP, is at risk due to the ongoing federal government shutdown now entering its fourth week. If the shutdown continues into November, CalFresh payments for over 35,000 residents here in Samatil County will stop this Saturday. These are not abstract numbers. These are our neighbors. In fact, In fact, here in South San Francisco, and I had this data point verified, there are 1,700 families, which include seniors and childrens in our city. This morning, Mayor Daniel Lurie in San Francisco, in a private-public partnership, allocated the use of over $400 million, $400 million from San Francisco Reserve Emergency Funds to be able to provide SNAP or CalFresh recipients gift cards. Pause. Not going there. Not going to provide gift cards to the majority of these 1,700s. But what I want to call out is, these are households with children, with elderly, or even disabled here in South San Francisco. Children alone are represented, 40% of all recipients that receive SNAP. Why this matters here in South City? Because it matters because we're not immune to what's happening in Washington, DC. We are not powerless. And it's a moment like this that requires for us to lead. We've led many times in moments, not a long initiative, not a long tenure that unfunded, right, that where are we going to get? We led with the Guaranteed Basic Income Program. We led with the Shop Local gift cards at one point. Now I want this council to think about perhaps extending 100,000 or 150,000 to our core service agency, the YMCA in South San Francisco. And I want to be very clear on what's happening right now countywide. The Board of Supervisors allocated about 880,000 primarily to the two food nonprofit agencies, Samaritan House and Second Harvest, so that they can provide then food or some type of distribution to the core agencies throughout San Mateo County. There are 1,700 households that, starting Saturday, are at risk of being hungry for the entire month of November. Now, I'm not proposing, you know, Senator Josh Becker, kudos to him, his office is collecting food and cans and whatnot. Youth, foster youth, elderly are not living on what a brown bag now provides. Brown bag is not what it used to be during the pandemic. A brown bag is being provided with onions, potatoes, green chili peppers, and red peppers. That's it. And I've seen it. I've confirmed it. There's no milk. There's no peanut butter, the government cheese or anything, none of that.
No protein.
No proteins whatsoever. This hits home because my mom received, when I was growing up as a child, back then, they were called food stamps. It wasn't even CalFresh or EBT. Remember looking forward to getting that cereal? And I would tell my family that, one day, we're going to change this. We're going to make it so that all the families get a chance to eat waffles as part of the free meals. 100,000, 150,000 won't break our budget. I have all confidence that we will be able to fund our firehouse. But imagine this, 1,700 families, when they're not able to. The average deposit that they get into their EBT card is about $200. So we're not even meeting that. But what we are doing is being able to give the YMCA additional funds so that they can expand their pantry. They can go specifically buy milk, ensure that there's eggs, ensure that there's bread, ensure that there's waffles, ensure that there's a candy or an ice cream in that bag, specifically making appointment for one or two days next week, as soon as next week, so that these 1,700 families, not the rest of the world that's not qualified, but specifically those that are currently receiving CalFresh and are current, can go into their pantry, pick up, and at least for two, three weeks here in South San Francisco, they won't be starving. I think it's incumbent upon us. We've always led. We've always taken care. And why not use biotech money for South San Francisco residents in a tire, in a time of need? This is what it is. It's the 25 million that, essentially, it's not ours. I'm not creating a new initiative. I'm not talking about December. Because I also have confirmed that the core agencies are doing their own to fundraise and to continue. And hopefully, fingers crossed, that the government shutdown won't continue. The 800,000 that the Board of Supervisors has provided will go into October and hopefully, again, amplified. I'm just, I'm just extremely, extremely worried about these 1,700 families. Many of them live throughout our district, not just in my district, throughout. So I would like this council to consider if there is any appreciation, to be able to buy peanut butter, eggs, milk, bread, some waffles, some cheese for our families for the month of November, and be able to extract, you know, 100, it could be 150,000, whatever it is that solidifies these families. And I'm not taking away anything from the fire station. I believe that we will fully fund that. But we're not alone in this. And we must share to our community that we're a council that leads. We're not living in a bubble. You know, many folks see us as the rich South San Francisco that speaks in biotech and gets all that money. Now it's our time to show. It's a call to lead. So I would like to know if there is support, if there is an appetite from this council to be able to move forward. I have invited Alida, who's the Executive Director of YMCA, in case anyone has specific questions. But I'm not about letting our residents go hungry for the, for the, for the next month. So if there is any comments, questions, again, I'm happy to direct them or have staff look into it further. But this is, this is a time for us to lead and lead with compassion and lead with empathy.
I concur entirely. But I do have some reservations. And I don't think we have to talk about it being biotech money. I mean, the money that we have to work with for this is, is there. I am not a fan, and I've worked the line where we gave away food, when it included protein during the COVID pandemic. And I am not a fan of those food lines that people have to enter. I prefer something like EBT or CalFresh because there's a little dignity there. And they can go into a marketplace and they can pick what is maybe culturally appropriate for what they consume at the dinner table. So I'm not about buying peanut butter so the Y can hand it out. If there's, there must be a way that people are navigating who has, you know, is legitimately on the list. And those are the people that we need to help directly and keep the concept of EBT going. I don't want to get into a food handout. I really don't. And I just want to tell you that in my other role as, you know, taking care of property, I've seen what happens when you give the wrong food to people that don't consume it. And it ends up in the compost, maybe, or sometimes just the trash, because it has no value to them. Yeah.
So I like, I like your heart.
Thank you.
I want to direct this to...
Sorry, you're going to answer.
I just, in response, staff certainly shares the concern. We're very aware of what the federal impact is on these reductions. We've responded immediately by, in the Friday newsletter, in the mayor's newsletter, we're going to provide some resources in the immediate, what we can do tomorrow. But we'd love to work with the YMCA, with Alida. Her pantry program, and she's here, so I don't want to speak for you, but I think is a dignified thing where if we could provide some supplies where people can pick what they need, baby formula, if it's fruit. So we'd be happy to work with her in terms of how that might work. I don't know that that, you know, we haven't received this money yet. I think we could identify other sources of funding and also reach out to our business community and people who might want to donate. I know there are people who would want to support.
Thank you for offering that. This is an urgent matter, right? Because it's happening. We can't sit around and plan and orchestrate and bring people to have meetings. I want to invite Alida, if you don't mind, because I want to know to my colleagues' request here, is there a way that we could specifically work to be able to distribute the EBT funds? Or be able to, because to his concern, right, that many folks are not eating, perhaps, and you're right, particular food items? And also, share what your pantry is at the current state.
Sure, yes. Hi, Alida Sobolovar from the YMCA Community Resource Center. Thank you for the time and the concern on the issue. We, it actually would be my preference, too, if we could give directly through the existing accounts for, through EBT, that folks already have those cards. They have, can go themselves. They have the power to choose. We, you know, the YMCA doesn't have the capacity to make that happen. We don't work with that department, though it would be my preference for it to work that way also. I don't know if that is possible. I reached out to someone from the county today to ask if that is a possibility, what are their plans, if something were like that were to happen. They weren't able to answer, unfortunately. Hopefully, their supervisor can come back to me and answer that question. Our current pantry on our office is different than the distributions that we do out in the community. So at our office, it is pretty limited, right? We call it an emergency pantry for situations that are emergencies. But we let the families choose what that looks like for them, right? So we don't verify what's an emergency. We just, if people need food and they're at our office, then we have rice and beans, canned goods mainly, and occasionally bread. So it's very shelf-stable items. We get donations from, through food runners from Trader Joe's every other week at our office. And we do have a lot of, especially senior citizens, coming through that, to our office for those. And that's where we give fresh produce in those bags of food. And our food distributions out in the community, those serve about 375 to 400 households a week. I agree. It would, it's actually, again, not my preference to have to do distributions through the food distribution way. I think it would be amazing if we could go and supplement part of that need through vouchers. And, I mean, we were part of the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program, so it is my preference to give people that type of choice. But with, working with what we have in the food distribution community space, we don't do preboxed items anymore. So now everything is like a, if you will, like a farmer's market style. So it does allow folks to have the ability to choose when they're going through that line, how much to get, as long as we have enough portions, and what items to receive. So we're hoping with partnership of Second Harvest that that eliminates a little bit of the waste of food and allows more choice.
Let me ask you. So the 1,700 number that I have been, received, that the information on, are those only EBT families? They're not regular persons that come on to your regular food distribution line, right?
Correct.
Okay.
There's, might be some crossover, but those specifically numbers of just SNAP recipients in South City.
And is there a way that you could supplement your pantry just for those individuals specifically?
Yes. In my conversation with someone from the county today, that works in the CalFresh office, they could provide award letters. There are SNAP award letters, just to verify that. We're providing it specifically to the folks that are having their benefits paused, if that's something that the council would like us to do for any sort of verification.
Okay. Anyone have comments on that or questions?
I'm a little confused. So you can get a letter that verifies that, that people are on the CalFresh list?
The client. So the family member, when they come to, they could get a letter from the HSA.
Oh, they have to request the letter?
Yeah.
They're not going to release the list to you?
I can ask if that's possible, if they, if the county could release the list to me.
Do they have like an ID or anything like that?
There is an EBT card.
With their name?
With their name on it. I don't know at the moment if there's any sort of date on that for, you know, expiration. I don't know. But using their EBT card that they, most of them, most folks actually do bring that with them, even though we don't require it. We could use that as verification as well, instead of having folks ask for an award letter that they might not already carry.
Okay. Because I think we're there.
Yeah. I wonder if we can even give them like a gift card?
That's what I was about to say.
Hmm. Yeah, I know we're, I shared the sense of urgency, right? And especially because it's not just food. It's, you know, if they're spending more money on food, then that's less than they could spend on rent and other payments. And so I shared the urgency. I wonder if gift cards, you know, maybe to Safeway or Costco or something, is that possible as well?
The other thing is that if this culturally sensitive kind of thing, if they don't go to Safeway, so that's our issue. But then, if I understand it correctly, we cannot add to their EBT card. EBT card, if I am correct, that's like an ATM that they used to pay?
Right. At least the YMCA can. I think maybe further discussions with the county or the Human Services Agency might
They're able to.
Let us differently, might tell us more.
Okay. Councilmember Nagales, any thoughts?
Yeah, can you hear me? Just wanted to make sure.
You sound different.
Yeah, I took my headphones off.
Could speak a little louder, though.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
I appreciate the mayor kind of suggesting this idea. I've kind of had conversations with this residents and the staff. As the mess that's happening on the federal level kind of trickles down to the local level, our residents are going to come to us for help. We've kind of seen that, like, as the mayor mentioned, with the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program and the Shop Local. Those things actually do help our local residents. And so I am interested in how we can provide some assistance to our residents during this difficult time. Because when, when the funding ends, there is going to be mass panic amongst our residents about what they're going to do, how they're going to feed their families. And so if we can figure out a plan, excuse me.
Bless you.
Bailey and Cole, now.
Glad you're not here.
Yeah, exactly. What we can do to help our residents in this time, I think is, is urgent. And I don't know if we should really wait. I think we need to figure something out. And I don't know if that's, is $25 million, or as what the city attorney was mentioning, Measure W funds. And I don't know, again, you might, because of the excess funds we have, we might be able to take a little portion of that to kind of help our residents just get through this month, to help them get by this important, important time. So I'm interested in seeing what we can do to help our residents. And we've done this before. We've, we've led on issues in terms of trying to help our residents in terms of food insecurity, in terms of rent. And this is something that we've done in the past. And so if we can come up with something, I would be supportive of the idea.
Thank you for that. Alida, do you have a plan as an agency, not to put you on the spot? I mean, I'm sure you're talking and everyone's panicking, but does the Y or have any plans?
Yes. Two things. One, I mean, the Second Harvest Food Bank did give us, and all the core agencies, $1,000 to work with, just kind of for immediate relief. So truly, on Friday, I am going to go shopping and fill up our pantry as much as possible to be ready for Monday morning, 8:00 AM, because I know we will have a line of folks at our office. So just as immediate and as simple as that, we're going to stock up our pantry on Friday for Monday with $1,000 that was able to be received through them. And then on a larger scale, yes, we're having emergency meetings as the YMCA of San Francisco to figure out what can be done, yes, with urgency, and also that's going to impact, hopefully, a little bit longer term. So fundraising efforts to try to raise funds that can look like gift cards or some sort of gift certificates to give to folks. And if that, for some reason, depending on how much is raised, if that can't happen, then again, it will be to increase the amount of food that's available on demand, on hand at the offices.
So should the government shutdown continue? There is a plan, long-term, in place by your nonprofit at the larger scale from San Francisco, and you'll be able to participate in that?
Yes, to respond and to mobilize, yes.
Is there any appetite from this council to provide, I don't know, 100,000, 150,000 to the core services agency? Or should we do it in credit, in, so not credit, gift card? Is that something that we could?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that, just as a reminder, that the item is agendized for a discussion of the use of the funds from the sale of the roadways. So I just want to clarify that the discussion at this point is about, about allocating, although those funds have not yet been received yet, the city could advance the funds and repay itself out of, out of those proceeds once they're received, and just make sure that the discussion is about that at this point in time.
Yes. So it's coming from that, I mean, potentially with that fund, and then get reimbursed on that fund.
Okay.
Well, I think it's a question of math, right? How many households and how many do you, how many dollars do you want in each card or credit to the EBT?
1,700 households.
Time.
Average of 200 is 340,000.
But that's half of what the average is that they get.
What is, sorry to interrupt, what is your average that they get deposited into their EBT card?
We also work with a number of, average of $200. Though we know that We also work with a number of, average of $200, though we know that for some, that is an average. So some get a fee of $30, some get way more than that.
Mine was as low as 97 or something.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
So if the average is 200, 200 times 100, well, 1,700, 340,000.
What if we did 100? I mean, we can't cover the entire thing, but we could cover 170,000 of it. Would this council feel comfortable in that appropriation?
I think Nell's trying to say something.
Do you mind if I make a quick suggestion just about implementation, especially given the intricacies of how this was agendized and came up? If there was direction from council to allocate at least an initial portion in this manner, then staff could work with YMCA on how this actually gets divvied up and rolled out. Maybe it's, you know, the cards are in increments of $50, and folks can self-report how much they typically get. And so we're not spending it all at once. It also gives us more time to understand whether or not the federal government is going to reopen, so we know how big of a hole we're plugging. And then it also buys us enough time to get to the November 12th city council meeting to agendize an item that's more thorough and says this is how we're spending the money already, and this is sort of the plan for the second half of the month. It might give you more information. It's also unlikely that everyone knows overnight to come to the YMCA to get the cards. So although it would be amazing to have every single one of them there on Monday, it's probably not entirely necessary, just given how long it takes word to travel to 1,700 people.
If 1,700 families show up, they can't serve them.
Yeah.
So I don't know, what can they serve in a day, even if their pantry is full? Maybe that's what we have to know, is keeping the pantry full. But how many people are we going to be serving until we figure out how to get to people that have EBTs?
You're right. It would have to be like a special invitation on two days, you know, eight hours each day. You open them and you give them appointments, right? I just want to make sure that we're not also putting all the traditional barriers, right? I get it, I totally understand. We have to vote on it and approve it, and I'm not into the minutia of the details. But your point is well-taken. Maybe that's the focus, right? Supporting what could happen on Monday or Tuesday.
Right.
In terms of supporting Monday or Tuesday, it is, at this point, the plan is just for the increased food for anyone, really, that walks into the door.
My question was, how many do you believe you can serve in a day? I mean, you have physical limitations. So, I mean, if the line is 400 long, you're not going to serve them all.
Right. If the line is 400 long, I mean, we would stay open all, you know, the full eight hours. But likely, something closer to 150 is a realistic amount. If I think back to COVID times, we were serving hundreds of people a day in our office as well.
If I may, would it make sense to allocate 170 now, and then if there's a need, we could allocate another 170 on the November 12th meeting? Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
It does.
It does. I'm okay with that.
All right.
I was going to go with 125, but just--
I can't hear you. We've got to speak up.
I was going to suggest a lower number, but if that's the number that council is thinking, I would be okay with that as well.
I just wanted to also mention, as mentioned earlier, the county has designated $900,000. So some of that will flow to our folks as well. So I just wanted to make that point.
And how is it flowing to them? I mean, there's an immediate need, and what are they doing?
So we didn't do all the research we should do in order to discuss this tonight, but my understanding is some of the money went to the core service agencies. It was divided among the eight core service agencies, and some of the money went to Second Harvest. But again, we're not, you know, we haven't prepared an item for discussion.
So there's a Y, know what they're going to get from the county?
We don't specifically know yet, no. We haven't received any written communication directly yet, any amendment to contract yet, no. It was just based on the board of supervisors.
So can our monies that can move more rapidly, perhaps, up to a certain amount? But when the county comes in, we look at that and--
I appreciate that.
I don't know how that would work out, but you know what I'm saying, that we would have up to 170,000, but we would look at what the county is giving the core agency and adjust accordingly.
Where's Nell? I'm sorry. Is that kind of, are you hearing what we're hearing, what we're saying? Thank you, just want to confirm.
Just because I'm guessing this might end up being some amendment to a contract we already have with YMCA. The preferences from council is to have a more flexible use of funds, or perhaps gift cards, so we can work with the YMCA. And then there's also the matter of procuring them, so we'll talk to Sky about how we can actually do that without sort of a more clear contract authority, so--
Well, the preference is to get deposited directly to EBT.
If possible.
If the county is able to, right?
If that is going to take three to four weeks, would we rather do gift cards sooner? I guess is a question for council.
Of course.
Yeah, of course, whatever is able to--
Whatever is best.
--meet the need.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to say, whatever the preference is, we're happy to work with what you decide, and we will try to do it in the most logistically simple and low-barrier way for the community that's coming.
And as you get more information, if you could give us some guidance on what would work best for your organization, is reaching as many people as quickly as possible--
Absolutely.
--we would benefit from that.
Absolutely, will do.
Thank you, Alita.
Thank you all.
Appreciate this very much, and thank you to my colleagues. This requires leadership, and I'm really grateful to all of you for leaning into this. And thank you to staff for looking into this. This is a report-only item. Madam City Clerk?
Moving on to items.
I need to ask, did we give enough direction?
So I think, what, I was just getting, thank you, I was just getting ready to make sure that, I think, it was a report, but I think we have heard consensus from the council to primarily proceed with setting aside the $25 million from the sale of the roadways to Genentech to be used for Fire Station 63 project with up to $170,000 to be expended on delivering food to people who are going to be in need as a result of the cessation of the delivery of WIC and SNAP benefits, in the way that, with some flexibility for staff to work out the most expeditious way to deliver it in a way that's going to get the money to people to be able to use for food as expeditiously as possible. And those funds will be repaid, the city will repay itself for fronting those funds once it receives the proceeds of the sale of the roadway. So ultimately, this is all about the use of the funds from Genentech. Is that a fair statement of the council's consensus?
I think that's fair.
Say that again.
I can do it, but I prefer not to.
Thank you, thank you, Sky, for summarizing. All right. Moving on to the next item, then?
Item number eight is a report regarding information on a temporary safe parking program.
Good evening, Mayor Eddy, Vice Mayor Diego, Members of the Council, Rich Lee, your Assistant City Manager. The item before you is a follow-up to a previous special meeting we had in April of this year, where the council had received information on homelessness. And the primary direction from council during that meeting was to provide more information about a potential temporary safe parking program. So this is the order of items that are going to be presented to the council this evening. First, of course, the study session in April, excuse me, later on in that month, we did a, conducted a site visit with our colleagues in the city of Mountain View, and a few months later, we visited the Berriessa site with the city of San Jose. The video that's about to play in a minute is a compilation of certain excerpts from our site visits from each of the, of Mountain View and then San Jose. So first, the city of Mountain View, and this was in April of this year.
When we first moved here, we had 30 RV spaces and no parking. Now we have 46 RVs and 20 parking spaces for people with their community cars.
So this is a time lapse of the RV area. As you can see, there's about 10 feet of space.
Portable site services, they are ADA accessible, hand washing stations, there's a fire extinguisher between each RV, 10 feet of space between each RV, you know, driving lane. There are no electrical pickups, they have generators, they want electricity.
So that land is on former landfill, so each of them have a methane monitoring device, which is provided by the city. Moving on to--
Similar to the Mountain View site, there's a lot here for resident parking. And then on the other side, actually, this is for staff parking, you see here, and over on that side is parking for those that are staying here.
So again, this looks somewhat similar to the Mountain View site, 10 feet of space between each RV, that's for per fire code. You'll also notice that each of the RVs either had a, sorry, generator or a solar array for energy purposes. They also have a community garden area. The other thing I wanted to mention, and you'll see it in a second, is the surrounding area. This was true for both Mountain View and for San Jose, largely industrial area. There were no residential land use or subdivisions surrounding the areas, and I think that's important. Okay, so I just want to do a quick summary of the site visits. First, for Mountain View, that was operated by a nonprofit called Move Mountain View or Move MV. That was a collaboration between the city and religious organizations to start. Again, I mentioned the former landfill, and you heard the operator there, they could accommodate at that site up to 46 RVs. They do have site monitors there, but they don't have 24/7 security. The RV requirements, and you'll hear just in a minute, a fairly high barrier. So each RV had to be registered, insured, and operable. Site visits, I would consider this kind of the basic amenities site. So yes, they had portable restrooms, there's no electricity, they gave pumping vouchers, and you'll hear in a second, kind of contrasting that with San Jose. In terms of the annual cost for this site, it's $2.8 million. 700,000 of that comes from Mountain View. This has been in place for eight years, and every year, it is a budget consideration. One thing I wanted to convey that is not in the staff report, that's something that was made very clear from the Mountain View staff member, which was if the city is considering this, a temporary safe parking program, from Mountain View's perspective, it needs support from the county. The county of Santa Clara, for the past eight years, has been contributing the difference of the operating cost. So for this year, it's $2.1 million. Moving on to San Jose, that's operated by We Hope, which is out of East Palo Alto, a larger site compared to Mountain View, up to 85 RVs. Unlike Mountain View, San Jose does not own the site, so that they have a 10-year lease, and you'll see in a second the cost of that. In contrast, in Mountain View, a much lower barrier. So it doesn't need to be insured, doesn't need to be registered, doesn't even need to be operable. If they have an unoperable RV, they can just have it towed to the site. Mayor Eddy, you were there on the site visit with us there. It was a fairly amenity-rich location. Instead of ADA-accessible portable restrooms, they actually had single-occupant restrooms. They had a number of washer and dryer sets. But similar to Mountain View, they did have, they had to have generators and solar arrays there for energy needs. And they do have 24-hour security. This is certainly more costly than the Mountain View site, $4.2 million in total per year. The lease itself, for the current year, is $1.4 million. The site operation, in terms of what they pay to We Hope and for all of the site amenities, that's $2.8 million. We also looked into the city of Pacifica's temporary safe parking program, similar to the Mountain View in San Jose, that is operated by a nonprofit, that's the Pacifica Resource Center. They started their program in 2022. When they began, they started with 13 spaces, kind of interspersed throughout the city. The program began three years ago, and they very recently extended the program for one year, and they added 10 spaces at the San Francisco Recreational Vehicle Park. There's a little bit, excuse me, different, they have different types of permit types, and, for example, regularly, you have a kind of a recurring 29-day period that you can renew. They do have a code of conduct that they have to abide by. In terms of the annual cost, it's fairly Spartan, you know, it's only $400,000 a year. I will note that for the first three years of Pacifica's program, they used ARPA money to pay for the funds. They did get support from the county of San Mateo of about $400,000, and you'll hear in a second why that's likely not an option for us.
So, quick question. Why is the cost of the Pacifica program so much less than the other two?
It's in the streets, right?
Correct. So there are 13 spaces that they started with three years ago. It's not in a lot, they're interspersed on city streets.
All in one area or just throughout the city?
So two of the spaces that I'm aware of, they're located near the city's courtyard, so that they happen to be near a public amenity, and, you know, we could certainly provide a map for the council if they're interested in a Thursday memo to see where the city located those original 13 spaces. I will say, and you'll see it towards the end, on a per-space basis, if you compare Mountain View, which is just under $10,000, Pacifica, which is a little under $18,000 per space, and then San Jose, which is $37,000 per space, actually, the Mountain View model is actually cheaper per space.
And in my conversation with Mayor, oh my God, I can't remember.
Beckmeyer?
Beckmeyer, yeah. Mayor Beckmeyer. She was saying that all of these people in their RV are also required to be just temporary. So they have to have something that they should be doing in the span of six months, they should be moving out and doing, yeah, transitioning into something more permanent.
And Councilmember Nicholas, thank you for bringing that up, and it's something I neglected to mention. In each of these programs, a requirement for participation in them is they have to have a case manager. So that's another thing that the operator does, is they provide case management services. Moving on to this heat map, this is our police department conducted an RV census. The last, they've been doing it every month since the special study session, and there are two primary hotspots that the council is aware of. First, it's the 300 block of South Maple Avenue, and then the second is the 400 block of North Canal Street. In terms of a kind of a straw poll survey, they asked the most recent group of RV occupants, which is 20, if they would be interested and willing to participate in a potential temporary safe parking program. Of the 20, only 10 responded, the other 10 were just not responsive. Of the 10 that responded, nine of them said that they would be willing to participate in a potential program, and of interest of those, six said that they would accept alternative housing, albeit they were concerned about what would happen to their RV. Our Economic and Community Development Housing Division did reach out to Life Moves to get input on kind of best practices and recommendations for a potential program. First, they emphasized the land, you know, following the Mountain View model, where they're not paying anything for use of the land. If there's an opportunity for the city to use free and available land, that would be ideal. If there's utility connections that we can rely on, i.e. gas and electric, any environmental concerns, so, for example, the Mountain View site, it's a former landfill, so they have to ensure that they have methane monitoring. Public transit access is also key, so if there's a bus stop, train nearby, that would be ideal. I've already mentioned the cost to scale, so that's something that Life Moves kind of wanted to bring to the council's attention. And then the regulatory approvals, you know, that's described in the staff report, but essentially, the less hoops that people have to jump through, the better, because it makes for more immediate outcomes for participants. The table before you kind of outlines what would need, what the city would need to do if it were interested in a potential program in terms of site preparation. if it were interested in a potential program in terms of site preparation, from paving to striping, security cameras, solar lighting. We anticipate just under $800,000 to prepare the site that's noted in the staff report, which is the lot that the city owns and controls off San Mateo Ave. Before I kind of close the presentation, I do want to acknowledge those that contributed to the research and the due diligence. Captain Adam Plank from the Police Department, our Deputy Public Works Director, Dave Bachhaus, our Housing Manager, Mike Noche, and our Housing Programs Analyst, Pierce Abrahamson. And with that, welcome any questions from the council.
Any questions, colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Mark.
Rich, thank you for the presentation. And so, Mountain View's program has $2.1 million, but they had county assistance with that in terms of funding. And then you also said in San Jose, it was about $4.2 million per year, and it looks like there was an assistance in terms of paying for that as well. And with Pacifica, $412,000, it looks like the county provided assistance for that. If we're going to do this, I mean, the initial cost right off the bat was, I think you said, like $700,000? In terms of speaking to the county, it doesn't seem like they're interested in funding these kind of programs anymore. Am I correct on that, Rich?
You are correct. Our city manager proactively reached out to the county to inquire whether they would be willing to support a potential safe parking program. And since Pacifica's program in 2022, the county has really shifted their attention more towards supportive housing and programs like that, and less so, and not so much with safe parking, unfortunately.
And then if we look at state grants, I know that in the initial conversation about this, I think the mayor was talking about the League of California Cities and looking at grants.
Our Economic and Development and Community Housing Division did attend a webinar where they talked about the potential grant funding that we looked into. Unfortunately, it appears that we don't qualify. It's more meant for county organizations.
Okay. I'll probably have more to say, but those are the questions I have right now.
Okay.
I think the, you know, that site preparation is kind of a deal breaker. It reminds me, because we're looking at maybe nine or 10 people taking advantage of it, it reminds me of what happened in San Francisco out at Candlestick Park, where they were spending over $100,000 per RV, and then the whole thing imploded anyway. So I'm not up for that kind of press. I know, I want to get them off the street, but we're not going to be able to prepare a site and make sense of that to the public.
So what happened, you didn't mention Redwood City?
Correct. Thank you for asking the question. Redwood City, we covered in the first homelessness study session, and Sharon may know more about this than I do, but Redwood City purposefully timed the opening of, I think it's their Transitional Housing Center, with the closing of their parking site. They mentioned, I can't remember if it was in a presentation, that they were able to get 65% of their participants in the parking program into transitional housing. And listening to our colleagues from other cities, they haven't had nearly that kind of success. So it's kind of hats off to our colleagues from Redwood City for having a successful program.
Right. And we are also, and that's the story of Redwood City, is, you know, they did have a very temporary safe parking permit that they ended. But, and what they found is a lot of RV dwellers, they want to live in RV, and so they ended up parking elsewhere. And then those who were interested in housing, you know, they went through the case management process, and they eventually found that their housing in the permanent supportive housing unit that they brought online. And what are we doing in South San Francisco? We are bringing permanent supportive housing units online. And we have played ball with the county, and we did not throw a fit like the city of Millbrae did. And I think what we need to do is be talking to our partners at the county to see how we can get those, these people who are interested in living in housing, and making sure that we prioritize them in the remand that we're having. Thank you.
So wanted to dive a little and unpack our site. I wish there would have been like a rendering or even more information on where that is, what does it look like right now? So you could give us, I mean, you told us how much it's going to take to go up there. But I also want to invite Dave Bachhaus here. You had mentioned something about perhaps another partnership with those that are complaining about all this RV. Maybe they can fund and step up and cover some of this cost. Was there any leeway on that conversation? Either of you, if you want to?
Good evening, Dave Bachhaus, Deputy Director, Public Works. There was some, you know, brainstorming, spitballing about talking with maybe UPRR, putting some campsites out there, or some safe parking spaces.
And they own, sorry, you're interrupting. They own a site where, or?
It's out off of Harbor. It's a UPRR spur. It used to be behind the old Toranis.
Oh, okay.
So we, looking at that site, looking at the possibility of having to extend our funding as far as possible, there would be some kind of lease requirement with them. The nature of the site was such that it was even larger and would require even more probably remediation. So after considering those sites and looking at a couple other ones, the decision was made at this time, to just figure out a site we owned, a site we didn't have to lease, and a site that we could just move quickly on, if that was the direction of council.
So were they approached, though, or discussed?
They weren't opposed. They've said that they would be interested in activating the space in some form or another. You know, that could be, you know, a rails-to-trails, that could be any form, something that just activates the space. That if you look at that space, it's 1,000 feet long by a couple hundred feet wide, and then, you know, just portioning off a section of it, we'd be right back where we are now in San Mateo Avenue.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Nicholas, any comments or questions?
I'm just concerned about the cost of having this. And, you know, right now, I don't think we have the amount of money to spend on this.
I think just realistically, we need to have more conversations with the county.
Yeah. And also, I'd like to unpack, I know they are moving away from the Pacifica model, but I know that maybe, I don't know, in future discussions, we could have the executive director of the, I believe it's the core agency that runs this program. Which is a very unique partnership. And they also, I believe, I don't want to say, I don't know if it's a chamber or some other business entity that also supports them in this. I was in a very brief presentation, and I caught the tail end of it. So I'm looking at what that looks like, right? Because I think, I mean, we're not going to meet 400 or 700, whatnot, but if there's opportunity to at least create a strip of a particular street in East 101 that we could kind of maintain and pilot, right, following a version of the Pacifica model, that could be something that we could explore. But I would, I'm speaking without knowledge, so I would like to further unpack what that looks like with them.
If the mayor would like, we can contact PRC, ask them for effectively a site visit like we did for San Jose and Mountain View.
Yeah. And again, this has to be, like the council member here to my left said, has to be a menu of options that we explore, right? It can't just be the only thing. It has to be multifaceted in terms of what we can do with this element that's being presented to our city. Any other questions? Councilmember Nagales, I think you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Any public comments, virtual or?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. This is a report-only item. So moving on to the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to closed session, item number nine is a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property is 244 and 246 Grant Avenue, APN number 012-315-150. City negotiators, Katie Donner, Management Analyst, and Nell Seelander, Economic and Community Development Director, and Sky Woodward, City Attorney. Negotiating parties, Ramses Nimri, Aurelio Roman, and Shahan Zandi, under negotiations, price and terms. Item number 10 is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Name of case, workers' compensation claim numbers 21002462 and 24002264. Sky Woodward, City Attorney, and Leah Lockhart, Human Resources Director.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. We'll adjourn to closed session.